At this time, I will call the May 19th, 2025 County Council meeting to order. I think this is what everybody's here waiting for. Sorry about those first two meetings. We had a couple of committee meetings that we had to do. Welcome to York County Council Chambers. We are always very thankful to have folks in the community come out and speak to the council on matters related to council-related jurisdictional items. We appreciate you being here. The first item of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I will recognize the Honorable Bonferrati from District Four.
I'll give a quick invocation prayer. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to convene. We thank you for watching over the many visitors and citizens who've come out to voice their concerns and their opinions on tonight. We thank you for guiding them here. We ask that you bless them while they're here, bless their hearts, their minds, and their body and spirit. We ask that you continue to watch over us as we do the people's work. We thank you for allowing us life, health, and strength. If you do nothing else for us but wake us up each morning, you've done enough, and we can't thank you with a thousand tones of all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Lord, continue to lead us and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have one oath of office tonight. Is Stacy Harrison here with us? If you are, if you could come forward and come straight to the podium. Ms. Harrison has been appointed to serve you all and our county on the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board. We have over thirty boards and commissions that we require folks from the community to step up and to volunteer their time, and usually they don't even get thanked for what they do. They certainly don't get paid, but we here on this council appreciate the work that you do and the work that you'll be collaborating with, with the Council of Governments on the workforce initiative. Our county attorney will come and meet you at the front in order to swear you in.
Good evening, and how are you?
My draft of the agenda. Let me know, I was swearing somebody in, so I echo that sentiment to the Chair. And I ask you to come and speak after me, our current purpose of the interview. I do thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Do you pray right hand? And you solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified?
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state?
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office?
Which I have been appointed.
And I will, to the best of my ability?
Discharge the duties thereof. Discharge the duties thereof.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend?
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We thank you again, Ms. Harrison, for your willingness to work on that board. I have a rare opportunity to recognize a fellow Bearcat, a graduate of 1993, so I have the privilege and the honor to recognize an outstanding member of Rock Hill High School, class of 2025, who is the winner of the South Carolina Association of Counties 2025 Board of Directors Scholarship for York County. For those of you who don't know, the Association of Counties is the only statewide organization that represents county government in South Carolina. The scholarship program was established in 1998 to recognize exceptional students who plan to further their education at an in-state, two-year or four-year college. And it's a double whammy for me, too, because I think he's going to the University of South Carolina, which is where I went to as well. Each year, the association awards one-time $5,000 scholarship to graduating high school seniors who are residents of chosen counties, and York County was among those chosen for the 2025 rotation. This year's recipient has a tremendous amount of school spirit, we've been told. He has a tremendous amount of work in student government, where he was named Student Leader of the Year two years in a row, and by his work as the school's mascot. He's also a member of the National Honor Society and the Veda Club. He served his community by volunteering with several student organizations to host fundraising drives for people in need in Rock Hill. And this fall, he is attending the University of South Carolina to pursue, I think folks will like this, a degree in sports recreation and leisure studies. It's my pleasure to announce the recipient of the 2025 Board of Directors Scholarship, Michael Davis. Michael, you certainly, you can say a few words if you'd like to. I have a plaque here for you to take, but we also want to make sure we get a picture with you as council, and so it's hard to come back and forth.
No, you're good. I don't need the mic, but I'll be pursuing a degree in sports management post the work with the NSFEL. Actually, the Carolina Panthers gave me almost a full ride to the University of South Carolina, so I'm hoping I can work through that.
Congratulations. We move now to our public forum session, which is the part of the agenda that individuals in the community can come and sign up and speak on matters related to county governance and county jurisdictional issues. A few things for folks who haven't been here yet. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, and please state your name and give your address before you start speaking, and then when you say those things, the two-minute time will start, because we do have a good bit of things to carry on in our budget, but we give this time at the outset. Some folks wonder why we don't respond to questions. That's not the purpose of this. This is the purpose of listening to the community residents, and so we ask that you keep your comments to things that aren't attacking individual council members, because they don't have the ability to respond to them. If you'll keep your comments related to things that are within council jurisdiction. Also, it's important that we keep order and that we respect everyone in this building and that we respect the comments that anyone makes, and we may agree with them, we may not agree with them, but in order to ensure that we maintain order, the things that I ask are that no one be booing or doing anything like that, that you not holler out comments. We're going to listen to the comments from the individual who's speaking. For the same reason, we're going to ask that we refrain from clapping. That can be intimidating if there's someone who shares a different view. However, if you want to recognize other individuals and say, hey, you know, I'm here to speak, and in the course of your two minutes, you want to say, other folks who agree with me who are here, please stand, then I think that's a respectful way of making sure that that gets acknowledged. All right, we will start with the discussion. The first item is, first individual is Lana Vivant.
I would like to address my neighbors. If you're here to support Move Silfab, please stand up. My name is Lana Vivant, 148 Charter House Lane, Fort Mill. The more I learn about Silfab's proposed operations, the more I cannot comprehend how they were able to get permits as light industrial. And I'm thinking that the information they provided to the county must have been limited, misleading, incomplete, but the permits can be revoked, and the time to act is now. Silfab's proposed methods far exceed limitations of light industrial zoning. We're talking about over 500,000 pounds of chemicals, hazardous chemicals, flammable and combustible liquids and gases, most of them to be stored outside. We are talking about air pollution control devices such as wet acid scrubbers and a 50-foot stack, onsite wastewater treatment using 1 million gallons of water per day in the chemical manufacturing lines. That is not light industrial, per zoning code. Light industrial does not include hazardous material treatment and storage facilities. Light industrial should not have hazardous materials, period. While Silfab appeals the BZA's correct decision, York County can and should revoke construction permits issued to Silfab. The BZA concluded there was an administrative error, and zoning code paragraph 155.1239 states the permit or approval may be revoked at any time prior to completion when it's determined that either, one, there is departure from the plans, the permit was procured by materially incorrect information, three, the permit was issued in error, four, any of the provisions of this chapter are being violated, and Silfab's development checks all of these boxes. So by now, dear council members, you have heard from the members of the community, you have plenty of information about the true nature of Silfab's operations, you have reports from reputable and independent third parties. Do the right thing and move Silfab.
Thank you, ma'am. Brendan McCluskey.
Brendan McCluskey, 729 Warwick Way, Fort Mill. If you're here tonight in support of Move Silfab, please remain standing. Phase two of the USC Arnold School of Public Health's report expands on concentrations in Silfab's air dispersion application to DES and also found in Silfab's risk management plan for both hydrochloric and hydrofluoric acids. Additionally, there are GHS pictograms identifying the meanings of the four chemicals of concern MSDS for each of those four. The new radius on these maps incorporates radii and buffers regarding straight-line distances without topographical influence. Worth mentioning is what DES stated in their response to comment section of Silfab's air dispersion modeling. The regulator is saying only 23% of the surrounding three kilometers area is considered urban, and that is why DES states rural is to be used instead. But Silfab selected urban on their RMP input and then used rural in their air dispersion modeling. Silfab is keen to use inputs that provide the lowest endpoint of toxicity to downplay the dangers to the public. Phase two's report is further validation of those dangers by experts. USC has no stake in this project and only provides scientific expertise for decision-makers. After Silfab's accusations of bias regarding phase one, USC confirmed their figures and sources, which are provided in their footnotes. This is evidence the modeling inputs originated from DES and Silfab's own reports, and I quote from USC, "This is significant." Expanded worst-case scenarios in phase two include an hydrosmogonia at 2.2 miles and hydrofluoric acid at 2.4 miles, showing this affects both York and Mecklenburg County. Worth noting in the GHS for hydrofluoric acid are these key points: fatal if inhaled, fatal if swallowed, fatal in contact with skin. Those most vulnerable are schools, daycares, and senior facilities who depend on safety from leaders. You are those leaders. Given the toxic chemicals stored by Silfab on site, there is potential to impact more than 50,000 citizens should accidental releases occur. This is a non-zero chance of accident. This summer's USC subsequent phases will continue to provide further impact. Council does not have to wait. There is no administrator approval present. Please revoke Silfab's permits.
Thank you, sir. Natalia Mitchell.
Natalia Mitchell, 965 Bridle Path, Fort Mill, South Carolina, which is actually less than one mile away from the proposed location of Silfab Solar. If you're here tonight in support of Move Silfab, please remain standing. At the May 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, when discussing maximum building heights, one council member stated that York County does not really have heavy industrial operations in residential areas, but that is not accurate. Silfab is a heavy industrial facility planning to run large-scale manufacturing operations, and it is located in a light industrial zone directly next to two schools and surrounding neighborhoods. Another council member, who has shown support for our concerns, chose not to speak on a specific point in the same meeting, and I respect that. It underscores how sensitive and important this issue really is. Also, if we are worried about how tall a building looks, should we not be far more alarmed about bulk storage of very toxic and flammable chemicals just yards away from our children? The truth is, Silfab does not belong in this location. It is not compatible with the surrounding community, and I urge this council to acknowledge the reality on the ground and act in the best interest of Fort Mill families and children. With no zoning administrator approval present, please revoke Silfab's permits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brandon Dunford.
Brandon Dunford, 157 Rose Tree Lane, Fort Mill. Good evening, council. I am here this evening to share my opposition to the Silfab development. I live in Fort Mill with my wife Laura and my three young children who are here tonight with me. Like many parents of kids who were redistricted to Flint Hill schools, I had no idea Silfab planned to operate such a large-scale chemical operation next to my kid's school. We're also busy managing work, raising our kids, that the early stages of this project seem to slip right under the radar. I went back and did some research as to how we got here and stumbled on a fee-in-lu-of-tax meeting. At one meeting, a council member highlighted the dangers related to the schools and said, as a council member, safety is first. Immediately following those comments, another council member stated that we can't speculate on danger and that we have a county staff that will do whatever their job is to assure the community that they are meeting what we require. We understand you were voting on a tax incentive. We are here tonight to voice our concerns about the location and the improper zoning based on undeniable facts. 1 million cubic feet of toxic gas stored outside is not compatible just a few feet away from school grounds. Simply put, the county staff is failing the community by not doing their jobs following the BZA decision. I'm not a hysterical parent. I'm a parent who cares about my children, and this is absolutely insane, and that's the most family-friendly term I can use to describe what is taking place. York County has a zoning code to protect us. Why isn't the zoning administrator doing their job? As a parent and especially a father, I will do anything to protect my children, as many of you would as well. I will step in between any potential danger and my children, and that's why I'm here tonight, so please protect our community. With no administrator approval present, please revoke Silfab's permits.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Costea.
Jamie Costea, 325 Bricksom Place. Good evening, County Council. My husband Nate and I moved to Fort Mill over 13 years ago from California, because with the cost of living there, we could not afford to start a family. Since moving to Fort Mill, God has blessed us with three beautiful children, and we are so grateful to be their parents. Recently, a friend sent me a link to a YouTube video from September 18th, 2023, where this council voted in the fee-in-lu-of-tax for Silfab. One of the council members took the time to do research to be comfortable with the decision. Part of that research included talking to the school district. While I don't know what was discussed, I do know that my husband and I, and the vast majority of the parents whose children are now redistrict to those schools next door, didn't know a thing about Silfab until May of 2024. The voices of parents were never heard. We understand that parents' voices aren't as important when it comes to tax incentives, but our voices should be heard when it comes to the safety of our children, especially when it comes to what we now know is truly heavy industrial chemical manufacturing taking place next to the school where our children will learn and play. 1 million cubic feet of toxic gases stored outside right next to our children's school is horrific. Parents all over Fort Mill are praying for a miracle to end this nightmare. We should not be forced to worry every day if we will get a call about an accident at Silfab. We send our children to school with the expectation that they will be safe. Please keep our children safe. With no administrator approval present, please revoke Silfab's permits.
Thank you, ma'am. Jen Williams.
Hello, council. Jennifer Williams. I am at 3139 Horseshoe Trail in Fort Mill, and I am also within a mile of the Silfab facility. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Williams. I live in Saddlegate, one mile away from Silfab. Going about life in Fort Mill, I talk to friends and neighbors, and in practically every conversation, the topic of Silfab comes up, every time, and it's the same question: How has Silfab been allowed to get this far? And we don't have an answer. Nobody has an answer. As a brief reminder, Silfab Solar plans to manufacture, not just assemble, solar cells, which is a heavy industrial chemical manufacturing process, using and storing bulk quantities of regulated hazardous chemicals and gases. They will also use 1 million gallons of water a day, treat it on-site in a separate building, and then pump it back to Rock Hill. All of this is in a light industrial zone and sharing a property border with our most precious and vulnerable residents at Flint Hill Elementary and Middle Schools, with no evacuation or containment plan other than to shelter in place. That's terrifying. After the unanimous BZA decision on May 9th, 2024, York County residents rightly asked this council why Silfab was allowed to continue its operations. In an attempt to address those concerns, this council was quick to issue a statement to address any misunderstandings on May 31st, 2024, and I quote, "York County has no jurisdiction over the issuance of environmental permits." Another quote from the same statement, "No permit was issued by York County after the BZA hearing was held on May 9th, 2024." Council members, you may not be aware, but in the years since that decision, York County staff has issued nine permits and 30 approvals of site plans, building plans, change orders, and more listed as Project 20240468. York County Ordinance 155.1239 allows the zoning administrator to revoke permits or approvals issued in error or when York County ordinances are being violated. Fort Mill and York County citizens implore you to protect us and ensure our safety. With no administrator approval present, please revoke Silfab's permits.
Thank you, ma'am. David Ortiz.
David Ortiz, Saddlegate neighborhood, Fort Mill. Good evening, council. As a South Carolina taxpayer, I have concerns regarding how the state's tax revenue is being spent with a $2 million grant provided to Silfab. On the development grant application, there was a question. Will this project acquire a new building or a physical addition to the existing building? That box is checked no. However, since then, three new buildings have been built in the form of chemical storage and a wastewater treatment plant, and building expansions have been done in the form of chemical bunkers, none of which are allowable in light industrial. Some chemicals are so dangerous they require their own separate building, all this being permitted and subsidized by tax dollars contrary to the grant application. As a taxpayer, I'm trying to understand how the fruits of my labor are given to an entity that misrepresents what they intend to do to get a grant, blatantly violates zoning codes, and continues to receive new permits despite a unanimous vote of the BZA categorizing their operation as heavy industrial and prohibited. I'd like to be shown that the county government is working in the taxpayer's best interest by acting within their authority and revoking permits granted based on deception and misinformation, and requesting a full audit of the Silfab fee-in-lu-of-tax agreement. Allowing construction to continue under these circumstances would undermine the integrity of the BZA process. Reward bad faith behavior by allowing misrepresentation to go unchecked. Prejudice the outcome of Silfab's appeal by allowing irreversible development and erode public trust in York County. Please revoke these permits and perform a full audit of the fee-in-lu-of-tax and grant application. And to, you know, keep this in context, they're not close to a school. They're sharing a fence line. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashley Horn.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Ashley Horn, and I live at 4104 Bamber Drive in Fort Mill. As you know, Silfab originally considered building their facility in Gaston County, North Carolina. We recently received FOIA documents from Gaston County regarding this topic. In these documents, Silfab listed South Carolina and Tennessee as locations outside North Carolina that were being considered, and when asked to explain the competitive nature of the project, Silfab quoted, "Speed-to-market is important, and communities with fast-track permitting processes and low regulatory requirements will be prioritized." We see Silfab's fast-track, low-regulatory attitude play out when Silfab's consultant called a request to submit a site plan to honor us. York County staff thankfully pushed back on this, confirming this is a change of use and Silfab would have to provide their plans to receive permits. Those plans that Silfab provided are what's keeping residents and parents of kids zoned to Flint Hill Elementary and Middle Schools up at night. We're all looking at the same thing. Why is nothing being done? If Silfab is willing to cut corners to obtain permits, what's stopping them from cutting corners once they become operational and are self-regulating the use of 500-plus pounds of toxic chemicals? With no administrator approval present, please revoke Silfab's permits.
Thank you, ma'am. Marissa Robbins.
My name is Marissa Robbins, and I live at 1126 Kingsbottom Drive. I'm here tonight along with many others because we care deeply about the future of Fort Mill. Over the past several months, many new facts have come to light, facts that show that Silfab Solar is simply not light industrial. From the materials that they will be using, to the processes involved, to the scale of the operation, there's growing evidence that the project does not align with what our leaders expected or were told when the permits were first issued. One of the qualities I admire most in leadership is the ability to adapt and respond when new information becomes available. It is not easy, but it is what earns the trust of the people. We believe that each one of you has that quality. We also believe that your willingness to revisit this decision is part of what makes this council so strong. We aren't here to assign blame. We're here to support the process of reevaluation. We believe that you have integrity. So we ask simply and respectfully, please take a fresh look. Review the facts and the concerns of what this facility entails, and consider whether Silfab being located where they currently are truly reflects the standards and the expectations that we all share for our community. We look forward to you showing us what leadership looks like and like when new information is provided. Please revoke the permits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Kokenhour.
I'd like to approach the bench to provide some materials.
You can just hand that to the clerk. Thank you.
Anyway, I don't care. I care, so I'm good, okay. Hey, everybody. Scott Kokenhour, 122 West Oak Street, beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood downtown Fort Mill. Bump last Tuesday night, football showcase, six football teams, 30 college coaches there recruiting. They were, Fortville Parks and Rec came up with some fields for us. York County sponsored the turf. That is a great event. Everybody participated in that event for York County. Great event. And Notre Dame was at Catawba Ridge next morning recruiting. But anyway, I found you $8 million in our assessors number coming up. I asked you to try to use that money, fully fund our new York County rec department, increase our budget for our muni's rec departments by three. Take that number from $75 to $225. Decrease the millage on York County residents, and do not increase our millage on our muni residents for this. I think we can fund this project this way. We can call a truce, be over this thing. This thing has just spurred the community, so I think that would be a nice offer to everybody, and we wouldn't increase millage and do things along that line. The only thing with the budget, I'd like to know in District 7, what we're spending on outside council. Silfab and the tower in Regia Park, I really think that number should be there for us. We should be able to see what our taxpayers are paying for. Item number two on your new business is our overlay district, and you know I am completely against that. Nobody got notified, no public hearings, no notifications along that line. I was informed that I would be notified by the town of Fort Mill with the overlay district, so I asked them to please process me for the intimate domain and condemnation versus York County, and I think I got a pretty good laugh. I also got this letter today about Penny's Five, a project starting on my property. The second paragraph Karen's got for you, it is a threat that says, "We're going to intimate domain, condemn your property. You need to work with us." And there is no rights on here, no public defender. I'd be better off being arrested by the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, sir.
Read my rights.
Thank you, sir. Lawrence Shaheen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Larry Shaheen. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Clerk, Mr. Attorney, and rest of council. My name is Lawrence Shaheen, 209 Delberg Street, Davidson, North Carolina, 28036. Here on behalf of Stanley Martin and Prestige Development, just to give you an update on the progress we've made with the community. the progress we've made with the community on consent agenda item number three, tax rezoning case 25-09. Had a wonderful meeting with the community on Monday last week. We sat down, had a lot of conversations about the concerns about that rezoning. Stanley Martin and Prestige have committed to making all transportation improvements required under the TIA. We have also, we are also going to be pushing very hard with SCDOT for a stoplight at one of the two entrances that would be on this development. We had about 18 members of the public there from the neighborhood and we're committed to making sure that that community continues to be involved and engaged with any construction that goes on out there as this is a project that we think is beneficial to the, to the community, but something that we understand there are negative impacts to construction and development and we are committed to mitigating those impacts as my colleague, Mr. Bennett will bring up forward in a minute. And then lastly, and most importantly, the deed restriction that y'all are going to be requiring and we have consented to is one we have no problem with whatsoever. We would just ask that the, that the motion be made so that the age-restricted single-family attached homes recorded deed be made at the time of transference of those individual lots. That's the only small legal change that we would ask. But other than that, it's a pleasure to be before you. Busy night for y'all, I can tell. So I will leave you with that. Thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Bob Bennett.
This is Bob Bennett, 1203 Lookout Circle in Waxall. Just want to say thank you to all you up there and thank you for listening to us. And I know this is a busy night. I won't say too much, but then thank you. We're committed to, to these homeowners around the surrounding areas, about the traffic and so forth. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, sir. Patrick Lindsey. Patrick Lindsey. Do we have anyone in overflow? No. We do. All right. We'll, we'll, we'll give that. I'm sorry. I didn't even see that, Derek. I'm sitting here looking. It looked like Patrick.
Do I get a few extra minutes since I'm two people today? How y'all doing today? Well, I'm not Patrick. I am Derek Lindsey though. I live at 1223 Outembreeze Court. Most of you all know me. Most of you all know that I serve on city council in Rock Hill. I am also the Showmars man. I have both of the Showmars restaurants in Rock Hill and I am a, on a host of boards and commissions throughout the city. And in saying that, I'm here about the rec tax tonight. I know there's been some ongoing discussions about the rec, the rec tax. I do think there's more questions than answers. So what I am asking of you all tonight. First of all, with some of those questions, I'd like you all to answer, what is a traditional youth sport? We need a definition and clarity as to what programs is included and what programs will be left out. With the 1.5 million unincorporated and if you suspend the 1.5 million in the unincorporated areas and do it countywide, will this increase in York County, will everyone receive a stipend or only the unincorporated area? And the $75 stipend that was mentioned, is it meant to be a one-size-fits-all situation, which I don't think it, it will be? And the $75 stipend, is that one time per year per child or is that one time per youth per sport? So I think it's more questions than answers and I was asked last week on my way out, can the youth come to the county and get that stipend and then take it to whatever municipality that they're, have the programming in so that the municipality don't have to create a new position to, I guess, get refunded on the back end because they don't want to create another staff position? I'm a businessman. I'm on city council. We're in the, we're in the middle of budget season. So I understand budgets and you have to go forward. I get it. I hate when I have to raise prices. Corporate tell me I have to raise prices. I'm fighting it tooth and nail. Don't want to do it, but I understand. And simply because I understand, I won't ask you all not to go forward, but what I will ask you all tonight is to table it six months.
Thank you, sir.
My time up.
It, it goes fast.
I know.
Derek, it goes fast.
I'm two people tonight.
Come back up as Patrick.
Did a great job. Look at yous. Violating the rules. Doctor, I hope I'm getting this right. Dr. Bradley Sahela. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sibelli and my address is 2099 Coverbridge Court. Speaking on the heels of what we just heard, for over 17 years, York County has supported municipal recreation programs through funding agreement that help equalize costs for participants living outside the Rock Hill limits. To fund this, the county levied recreation tax residential properties located in the unincorporated areas of the county. On May 5th, y'all voted five to two to eliminate this longstanding tax. In its place, the council has proposed a new tax increase applied to all properties in York, in York County, including within municipalities. Recreation should be available for all, affordable and affordable for all. Cutting funding may allow non-city residents this opportunity to go away. Now, I happen to teach studio art to approximately 90 seniors and citizens in one of these rec centers whom will be affected by this. They're on fixed incomes and the reasonable registration fees allow them to explore creativity and give them a self sense of dignity. All of the PRT rec centers have some sort of creative programming allowed, handicapped, mentally challenged, and other folks participate in something that is truly they look forward to. Art is a therapeutic prescription to some who attend classes with terminal illness and low esteem. Believe me, I teach them. I urge you to reconsider this decision and reinstate that assistance. The county currently, to my knowledge, does not have a recreation facility that offers such activities for those types of individuals who cannot do sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate all of, all of the folks who came out tonight to speak to the council. There, there, I think there is something that I do want to make sure that folks are aware of in this room. Two civil lawsuits has been filed in relation to Sylfab and are currently pending in South Carolina Court of Common Pleas. York County has been named as a defendant in one of these actions and the county is defending itself in that action, which includes claims for monetary damages against the county taxpayers. The county has been advised by its attorneys not to comment on the matter in litigation, which is part of the reason why it makes communication difficult unless legal has approved the statements. In the, in those court cases, the issues related to zoning are before the circuit courts for decision. So I wanted to make sure that folks who were in this room who weren't aware of that, that they understood that. Now that we've concluded our public hearing forum, we're going to move now into our consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve with the removal though of number three.
Second.
All right, number three. Hang on, let me find out where we're putting that. We'll give a few minutes to let folks clear the room.
You're gone?
Thank you.
You're not leaving, are you?
See you, brother. Yep, I will. See ya.
Good evening. Good to see you. It's nice to meet you, Frank. I'm Watts.
Now, now that we've cleared out, the motion on the table is to approve consent agenda with the exception of item number three and consent. That will go to number four in the items of new business. Any discussion? Thank you for your second.
I had a second.
All right. You got it. Any discussion on that? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on the consent agenda is approved as amended. We move now to our, we do not have any public hearings tonight. We move now to our first item of old business. Council to approve second reading of an ordinance to establish the operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to establish a consolidated fee schedule for all existing county fees relative to the operation of county government, its boards, agencies, and departments, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Once again, so that we can move through this process as, I guess, as orderly as possible if we can have a motion to approve the budget and then each council member will have the opportunity to have the floor to make any amendments if they want to attempt to make any amendments and, and that's how we'll move forward. At the end of all that, then we'll come back to the main motion of approving the budget.
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Did you get that, Karen? Who, who did that? All right, motion in a second. Do we have any amendments?
Yes. I'd like to go ahead and do an amendment on this to add the 1.5 millage rate back into the budget for rec funding. Based on our discussions we've had in the past, I think it's our due diligence to make sure we continue to have this discussion because we've got kids out there. They need to be going to programs that are very affordable, et cetera. So again, that is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Yes.
Now we will be discussing the proposed amendment, which is to put the, put a one and a half mil addition, the, the unincorporated, I assume, is that what you're referring to? That only is taxed on the unincorporated residents into the budget.
Madam Chair, point of order, hasn't this motion already been voted down and shouldn't it have to wait a certain period before we?
Only at that same meeting.
Was that?
Only at that same meeting.
Okay.
Would you have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and start. So based on this, you know, we had a lot of discussion around the, the rec funding and what these, you know, the municipalities have delivered to us. There was a lot of conversation and a lot of good conversation we got from the municipalities around the value that they bring back to the community and their willingness to identify what is that measurement, what is the quantifiable measurement as we move, move forward. We've got something that's been in place for 17 years. We're, we're looking at an opportunity here to make sure that our kids are continually taken care of by the opportunity of what the municipalities have supplied them. The county, we're not in, we're not in the active recreation business. We're not out there building new fields. It's not our business outside of the park that we have in Lake Wiley. There are no other fields. It's too expensive, but I just tell you, what the municipalities have supplied for this area has been phenomenal. And that impact to the municipalities as we move forward to pull it away, we need to take a pause on this. We need to give this one more year to identify exactly what the measurements are going to be, what the requirements are. And we heard last, last go-around, the municipalities were, were ready to sit down again, iron this out, and we could come up with a final agreement that everybody is good with. So again, I'm here to support, to make sure that we continue to take care of our kids and make sure that we have the, and it's not just kid, it's, it's of all ages. You've got all kinds of programs out there. So we've got to make sure that we're standing up for everybody and we move forward in the right manner. So I propose to make sure we add it back in and we get it right as we can move forward for next year.
Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Thank you. So first thing I want to say is, we hired our new county manager last April. One of the first things he said was that we were going to start working on our budget for 2025, 2026 as soon as he was hired. And that's what we've done. There's been a ton of due diligence done. We completed a strategic plan that laid out what our initiatives were and are. And for a county that has run extremely lean, we, we've got some, some pots to fill in our budget this year, unfortunately. And we're going to talk more about that, I'm sure, tonight. But let's talk about the rec tax for a second. So right now, there is a motion on the floor to include, keep the 1.5 tax that's collected for the unincorporated area of the county. These are the citizens in the unincorporated area because we don't, we don't offer active recreation in unincorporated areas of the county. So this allows them to actually go to the municipalities and that's youth, adults, seniors, and those that are handicapped to go into the municipalities and utilize their services. So I was sitting in church this Sunday down in Charleston. Before I got in the church, actually, we drove in and I had never been there before and with my daughter, my son-in-law, and our two grandchildren. And we drove in and we're weaving around the parking lot and going around buildings and we finally parked and I thought to myself, good God, are we going into a shopping mall for church or is this a university? What in the heck is going on? And I walked into the church and I'm walking in and I'm, this thing is massive. And I started looking around and they've got a place over here. You can buy coffee and Danish shoes and Coke and Gatorades and everything else before you go into church. And they had a wing for the K through three-year-olds and they had a wing for the, the older children and a wing for middle schoolers and high schoolers and adults. And I thought, wow, this is unreal. Because I reflected back to when I was a child going to church in downtown Rock Hill where you walked into the parish hall, that's the only thing that was there, and you had church in there with your suit and tie on and you left and you didn't come back to next Sunday. And it just made me think, when I left that church and went to the next church, was, which was a contemporary church, and I initially went dressed up and I went back the next time in shorts and then I went back in flip flops, then I started wearing t-shirts. It just, I got more comfortable with the evolution of the church, even from music, from the choir to the praise band. Some of you know what I'm talking about if you've been through this transition. So as I was thinking through this, I thought about what the municipalities have been through here in York County. So as a native Rock Hillian, I lived in Rock Hill 59 years of my life, I started reflecting back. And so when I was a child, and this is going to take a minute and I apologize, but there's a rhyme and reason to everything that I'm saying, I feel like. When I was a child, I played baseball at Oakwood Acres. And then I took my children to play baseball over at Hargett Park. And back then, those are pretty much the only parks in Rock Hill. And then in 1984, I think it was, our mayor at the time, Betty Jo Ray, said, "We need to put a park between Eden Terrace and Cherry Road." And there was a ton of controversy over adding this park between those two streets. We ultimately did it and it ultimately became a huge success for softball and a walking park. So that was, that was kind of the first step forward and I think for Rock Hill to get into active recreation. Well, following that, there had been a number of parks open. Manchester Meadows, I think, was the next big park to follow. We've had the Sports and Events Center downtown. Currently, the City of Rock Hill just finished the Emmett Scott McGork. You're, you're familiar with that because that's actually over in your district where they spent $12 million on that particular project for the citizens of York County. We just saw at ARFAT's last Friday that the South Side Regional Park is about to go underway. Phase one's a $30 million investment by the City of Rock Hill for the citizens of York County. By the way, at the end of three phases of that project, it's $100 million to finish that project, I've been told. Significant investment for the citizens of, of York County. There's also Armory Park, which is a $2.4 million park that's in the, that's actually beginning to start. And then over at the Sports and Events Center, right down the street on the corner of, I think it's Camden, I don't remember, White Street, is the Bleachery Field House, which is going to be a $19 million project. I say all this to say, when you look at what just Rock Hill's doing- I say all this to say, when you look at what just Rock Hill's doing, and maybe this doesn't mean anything to you, but as I've gotten into this, to really understand this whole conversation about active recreation versus passive, passive park recreation is what we're in, that's what we do here in the county, we oversee passive parks. We rely on the municipalities to provide the active parks, and we've pretty much said at this point, we don't foresee us getting involved in the active parks business, so we want all our citizens, that be youth, adults, seniors, and those that are disabled, to use the municipalities. So then I start thinking about this, and I think, well, I've also learned that the municipalities, cumulatively, the seven municipalities, their budgets cumulative are about $15 million, and then we're learning that that $15 million really doesn't cover all their expenses. I just mentioned a minute ago, I mean, if I added all this up, it's, I don't know, it's $50 million-plus dollars they're spending on capital improvements right now, so it's not that projected list I've mentioned before of 115 million of capital projects in the future, they're actually working on these projects. Now, I don't have the projects for what's coming for York, or Clover, or Tegukay, or Fort Mill, but they have projects just like this that our citizens are getting to enjoy. So I'm going to go back, the budget's right now cumulative around $15 million. So I joined council in January 2023. When I joined council in January 2023, two years, the rec tax committee would meet, because we create 1.5 mills, which this year would be $1,745,000, we create to invest, to give to the municipalities, so our citizens can utilize their parks. So, when you think about the $15 million, in this year, we may—we probably, if we did, put the rec tax for the unincorporated back in our budget, it'd be roughly $1.3 million we're going to split amongst the five largest municipalities, $1.3 million, when cumulatively those municipalities are losing money at a $15 million budget, and we're going to put in 1.3-ish million, so our citizens can go utilize their services. And I didn't mean to be sarcastic at a previous meeting, but I said, "You don't really necessarily need a forensic accountant to figure out, that's a good deal." So, I too agree with Councilman Aldette, that we need to consider keeping—the actually, this is in our budget till 12/31 of 2025, if you don't know that. So it's in the budget till 12/31 of 2025, so going back to what Councilman Lindsay said, I'll get to that point in a minute. So, I believe we need to keep this in place, and not just for youth, by the way, so the question just a while ago brought up about youth, and there was a question that he asked, he said, "What programs are we talking about for youth?" So, and I don't know the answer to that either. I don't mean that derogatory towards our staff, I just don't know, I haven't asked that question, that's my point, so. We don't know how the municipalities are going to react to this either, we have no idea how they're going to react to this. I mean, we're the customer, we're the municipality's customer, and we have no idea how they're going to react to this idea of taking away the 1.5, we don't know what they're going to charge us. We don't—somebody mentioned earlier that—oh, Councilman Lindsay mentioned that what they may do is just send the citizen over here to York and let them collect the stipend if they qualify for it, whatever that stipend's going to be, which we don't real—we know here, we'd like to give $75, but we don't know what the municipalities want to charge. I looked at the per capita rates, and they all varied for the five that reported, but that doesn't include, I said a minute ago, their budgets aren't driving all their cost, and it doesn't pay for the capital improvements. So I just hope we haven't opened up Pandora's Box here. My request is similar to what Councilman Aldette said, my request would be that council would ask our staff to meet with the city managers and the parks recreation groups of the municipalities, and just like it's written throughout our strategic plan, ask them to collaborate and come up with a formula or a plan on how we're going to fund the unincorporated residents, because when you read the ordinance, it does say every resident, that means youth, adult, senior, and disabled. So how can they all utilize the services of the municipalities? And I'd like—I'd—it'd be great before third reading if they get together, and they came up with a suggestion for us to approve. Now, I'm almost done. Since I joined council, the rec—the rec committee would meet, and they'd come up with a recommendation, so then it comes to count—goes through committee, and then it comes to council. When it came to council, Lake Wiley didn't agree with the allocation, the formula, wasn't us, but what happened with us was, since Lake Wiley didn't agree with it, then we had to have a political discussion on how we were going to divvy up money, and we had no formula. The rec tax committee had a formula, we didn't have a formula, we got political with the money when it hit us. And so, this is the first year, tax year 25, '26, where Lake Wiley will be paid out of the H-tax fund, $325,000 at H-tax. So then if you go back and you look at the history of this conversation, no offense, but if if Lake Wiley was the issue, and now Lake Wiley's out, and they're not incorporated, by the way, right? So then you go back to the seven municipalities that are incorporated, and you say, "Okay, let's come up with a strategy on how we can divvy up this $1.4 million," and I think they could most definitely come up with a solution that they could bring to council that we could either agree upon or not agree upon. So, I would suggest to do that, and in the meantime, we're asking them for data, and unfortunately, they don't have the data. I think it's unfortunate, too, that they're also working on their budgets, and they don't know where they stand with this allocation. I mean, they do know right now, it's 5-2, that they're not going to get the allocation, they're going to get a stipend over a period of time, that we're determining how much that stipend's going to be. So I suggest that we put the—leave the 1.5 in our budget for unincorporated, which generates $1,745,000, also pass the 1.5 million countywide tax, that's going to generate just shy of $3 million a year, because we do need that money to fund our parks, now and in the future, the parks we currently have and those that we need to invest in in the future. So if we did that, you got until April of 2026 for the city managers, our county manager, the Parks and Rec Department of the municipalities, and our Parks and Rec Department to meet and come up with a strategy on what they're going to suggest for our budget 2026, 2027. So I hope that all makes sense, and I apologize for taking up the time that it did, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Mr. Roddy?
I'll go next. In my 14 years sitting up here, the last five, I think we've had this topic in front of us, saying, "Give us one more year, we'll figure it out." "Give us one more year, we'll figure it out." We didn't just rush to this decision to do away with the rec tax, we've been talking about it since the last time we heard one more year. And I would commend every municipality in this county, they've done a great job of providing their recreation for what they do for it. What has changed since the inception of the rec tax is, number one, we've gotten into doing parks. Number two, it's looked on the surface as if it's a money grab, because the more money we take, the more money each municipality say we need, because we're building more parks. Well, this council don't get a say into building a park over here, building a park over there, offering this program, whatever the fee is for those programs. And we heard that we don't know what the municipality's going to charge for, whether it's football, baseball, soccer, soccer, or whatever the programs are. That's not incumbent upon us. I've asked our county manager, "Have you talked to the different municipalities?" And what I've heard him say is, "Yes, I've talked to them, but we don't have their fee schedule." He can't—we have—the fee up—for the following upcoming year, yeah, for the upcoming year. We kicked around the idea of, "Is 75 enough? Is 75 too much?" One thing I do know is that I will not support implement—putting back in the budget the 1.5 for the county rec tax fund and a 1.5 countywide tax. That truly is a double tax, we are increasing on top of what we already have. What's been proposed in the budget is that we remove the rec tax from just the county residents and impose a 1.5 countywide, where everybody pays it, not paying it twice, because if we leave the rec tax in, county residents will pay the 1.5, and then when we add back the 1.5 countywide, county residents are going to pay that 1.5 again. That's not the smart thing to do. We are creating, and we're still supporting our municipalities, we're just using a different funding mechanism of how the money goes out. I think some municipalities received upwards of $450,000 last year. The last several years, they've received 375, 400, we haven't even gotten data that says, here are the numbers that have participated, whether it was football, baseball, soccer, to show what we're getting for writing a $450,000 check and turn around and walk out the door. We can't continue to do that and it go unchecked without us knowing what we're getting, what the taxpayers are getting for those checks that we're sending out. We've had—it's like pulling teeth to get the data of the participation. And when we've gotten the data, we've heard that, hey, over 50% of our participants are from the unincorporated areas. Well, we all know the population is inside the city limits, that means virtually every single kid that lives in the unincorporated area would have had to participate in order to outpace the population in the cities. We know that's not happening. So we've been struggling with getting verifiable data, and on top of that, I think it should be tied to registrations. Now, if—and I've took—I've taken several calls over the last month or so about this. There are programs that we should be looking to obviously add a little bit more, because they are doing things above and beyond just the youth rec programs. I can see that, but don't just say the solution to all this would be just give us the same amount of money you've been giving us, and then turn around and add another tax for what you need. We're trying to be respectful of, obviously, the services that they're providing by coming up with the stipend, and I think county management is prepared to deal with how those funds go out. No one's going to walk into county and say, "Hey, I need that $75 check to take over to my municipality." There's a better way, there's a streamlined, better way to do it than doing it that way. But I think the reluctance, and I'll go back to what Councilman Huckabee mentioned, but even about Cherry Park, when Cherry Park was about to come online, there was some hesitation about, "Is this the right thing to do?" It worked out beautifully. There's some hesitation from some people as to what we're doing, is it the right thing to do? And I feel it's going to work out beautifully. I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, we were looking to change how we funded our CVB. People were reluctant, didn't want to do it. It turned out beautiful, we just had a brick presentation upstairs, how vibrant these things are happening in our community, but we made a tweak to it, we made a change. And I've seen on this council, for the last 14 years, if we make a decision that's not turned out the way we're supposed to be, we can always come back and redo it, re-tweak it, we're not locked into a hundred-year anything. So give this a chance to see if this is going to work the way it needs to work. But I'll tell you, we do need revenues and funding to fund our parks, there's no way we can turn over the 1.5 mills to the municipalities and think there's going to be enough left for us to fund our staffs, our maintenance, to pay for our parks. We need some of those funds, too, and we're putting some first-class parks on the ground that every citizen in this county can walk up to, whether it's a $2 fee, or a $3 fee, or a dollar fee, or no fee. So the emails that have gone out saying, "The county's now getting ready to tax you on facilities and parks you would never use," that's—that's not true. We have tons of people visiting our parks, and they're not limited to county residents, they're open to everybody in this county. We even have people come from out of state to visit these parks, so we know we have first-class facilities. Everybody may not have a boat to go get in Lake Wiley, but you can go out to the to the park area. So we're doing things with your tax dollars, and I think we are in the right vein when we're saying to everybody, "We want some accountability with the checks we're cutting and giving to these municipalities." And if that is so wrong, I'll be in that wrong line, because we ought to be able to say, "X number of county residents participated in these programs for this $400,000 check, for this $300,000 check." If that is so wrong, I'm in the wrong profession, because I would not sit up here and continue to turn a blind eye and not get what we need from a data standpoint, and not create a funding source that we need to fund our parks. Now, I know there's been some conversation about the tax increase, and I'll tell you, I'm a city resident, I will pay that same $24 if my house is valued at $400,000, which is not, but it's only $6 per $100,000 that we're looking to ask everybody to pay. If you have a $200,000 house, you're going to see a $12 increase on your taxes. $300,000, $18. That is very miniscule in the eyes of what it costs for Katava River being, Lake Wiley, parks over in Clover Lake Wiley, Earth Mountain, Nanny's Mountain, all these parks that we have, and we're asking our county residents and city residents throughout the county for $6 per 100,000. If that's going to break your household, your household's probably already broken. That's just to be honest with it. I would love for a component to address the extracurricular activities that don't include sports. We've heard from people who, whether it's disabilities, whether it's seniors, whether it's active adults, we can work those in there, but it has to be done through county management. Don't pick off city—don't pick off county council members to try to work this work through our management staff. We pay them five days a week, I'm not going to name their salary, but they make a good salary to do this, and we just show up on Monday night, whether we give it the blessing or turn it down. Don't put that on county council members to develop this. County manager's been here, he's been working diligently, he has a comparable staff, we have a good attorney. Let's use these shows, don't put that on me to call me to beat me up about not supporting something that supports seniors, middle-aged. Let's go through our county management. Don't—don't—don't put this on each council member to come up with which programs this is going to support, which group is going to support. I put that on our staff. I think we get—we're capable of making a good decision, but I don't support adding back the rec tax and adding the 1.5 county—countywide mill. So, I think I've beat it up enough.
Well, everybody knows where I feel and how I feel on this rec tax. I really wasn't planning on just beating this horse again, but let me just say that I still do not agree with this amendment and won't be supporting it. I really wish the motion had been put on the second item for business, but since we're here, and we'll drag it out, the issue I have, as Councilman Roddy has said, and that we've all said repeatedly, is that there's no transparency to this. You know, this almost feels like—I'm going to go there—extortion, because these counties are coming—or the cities and municipalities, they're coming out with these programs, and they're making these decisions on their own and offering them, and then we're obligated to pay for them. We're obligated to give them county taxpayer money, and if we don't give them their money, then they're taking it out on the county residents, and I don't agree with that whatsoever. You know, we're trying to work for a partnership, we've talked, you know, county managers already had meetings, we're done meeting with people, they're just wanting to drag it out past the budget again, so we can kick it down the road another year. It's been kicked down the road, as far back as I've looked, and I should probably go back and actually read all the meeting minutes, but back to 2018, it's been kicked down the road every year. In 2022, the rec coalition couldn't even agree on their own way to divvy up the things, and council had come up at that point that if they didn't come up with something soon, we were just going to do away with it, period. And I couldn't find in the meeting minutes in the 20 or 30 minutes that I spent reading the additional after meetings, what had actually happened, but I assume somebody came up with something. But that was because they knew they were going to lose a whole bunch of money if they didn't agree to something somehow. You know, why are we giving a whole bunch of money to a municipality that has enough money to fund all these different programs for their citizens? What about the other parts of the county, the other municipalities that don't have that kind of money, that can't just come up with a whole bunch of new programs? And, you know, you'll say, "Well, they can just drive over to the municipality they have." Well, what about up in the northwestern part of the county, where it's an hour and a half drive to town, or to Rock Hill? I mean, you expect them to come down for for some of these programs? If next year, one of the cities decides that we're going to have, you know, automobile racing as a rec, are we going to be obligated to fund that for the citizens that want to race it? as a rec, are we gonna be obligated to fund that for the citizens that wanna race it? You know, this thing, when it started, to the best of my knowledge, started out for child, you know, for youth programs, to help with youth funding so that, you know, because it's hard enough for the kids and the parents having kids, because kids are expensive. But, you know, it started at that point, but it just kept growing. And as it grew, we just kept giving them the money, because we didn't have any else for, I mean, it was just there. And so, they grew more programs. And so, we gave them more money and they grew more programs. Did we get a say in any of those programs? Did we get to vote for any of that? Did we get to vote for, or get a say in any of the new parks that they built or any of the new things that they did? No, we just gave them more money to go with it. We can't just keep giving them the county resident money with no strings attached, no data, and no transparency. They've had plenty of time to develop this data and as we've heard, they don't have it. Or they don't have enough, you know, it's not detailed enough to really pinpoint what they're using the money for. They're just backfilling their budgets with it. You know? But again, it goes back to, this is the fairest, most equal way to get it divvied out among all the municipalities, to provide recreation opportunities for the youth. And if we find out next year that it wasn't enough and it actually caused a hardship, and you better believe that if I was running a city and it was causing a hardship or was gonna cause a hardship, I would have all the facts, figures, and pictures to prove to you what I needed that money for. I wouldn't just show up and say, hey, just give me the money. I mean, we, nobody works that way. So, you know, we can work this out, we can make it better, and we can make sure that all of the municipalities, from Clover to Hickory Grove, to, you know, Tega Kaye and Rock Hill, all get funding that is equal for the county residents for all that they provide. So, again, I am in support of, you know, what we're doing and the, the parks programs that we have and for helping the municipalities, but we just, we can't just keep doing the same old thing over and over and over. That's all I have.
I'd like to say ditto, but I will express my concerns. First of all, I am not for raising any new taxes. I would like to say that. And as far as the current tax, which I thought we voted on last week, the one and a half rec funding back into the budget, there, my concern, and I think I will be the third council person to say this, and I had these concerns last year, but I thought, well, I'm very new, maybe I'm just gonna, people that have heard this time and time again, let's see what they say. But my thinking, because I was in business, would never have given someone just carte blanche, a check, here you go, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, you don't have to tell me how you're spending it, it's okay, just do it. I think if the municipalities, if this was reversed, I think absolutely, one hundred percent, the municipalities would say to us, we want a bill. We want to know how much you're spending on this, how much you're spending on that. I mean, I have a thing right now with my insurance company and my house is completely gutted and stuff, and they've given me a large amount of money, but guess what? I've got to give them the amount of money we're spending on the floor, on the paint, on this, on that, because if I don't spend that money, I gotta return it to them. And I am a very honest person and I'm gonna do that. So, accountability and transparency, transparency, because guess what? This is not my money. Well, yeah, it is, because I live in an unincorporated area of York County, but I, I've paid it for years, I don't even know, I mean, it's just on the bill, you know? And, but it is the taxpayers' money. Every single thing that we're charged with up here is the taxpayer money. And we need to show the community of, the communities of York County that we are responsible people who care about the money, the hard-earned money that they get and then that tax bill comes rolling in and they've gotta pay that tax bill. And they really have no say-so. But they've charged us to be a voice for them. And I think we need to take that into account and, and our little deal with the amount of what Rock Hill's doing, I mean, that is staggering. I mean, I was shocked. I'd like to hear a replay of that sometime, the amount of parks that they are building. But then I heard that they were in debt. So, that doesn't jive with my business mentality here, because if I was in debt, I wouldn't be going into debt building more parks. So, I'm not sure about that. But anyway, I just want to make sure that our unincorporated kids can continue to be on the municipalities' fields. And the, it's so simple, the parents are charged. They're not gonna stop paying the municipalities. They are charged for whatever sport their kids are playing, whether it's basketball, soccer, whatever, they pay. But then, we're gonna pay again. We're gonna pay them again, seventy-five dollars. So, I'm not sure if everybody understands that, but they get the parents' payment and then they're getting the county payment. So, I mean, I don't know. And then the parents that, several parents in Fort Mill that I talked to, they were giving their time freely to coach these teams. So, the municipalities aren't even paying for the coaches. They're, they're giving their time, giving of their time. And anyway, so that's, that's my rant. Go ahead.
Somebody's hiding, running back to the barn, ain't it? Somebody's hiding it behind the barn. All right. My biggest thing, I guess I got to say about this, the non-transparency and the untruthfulness. One, I don't like the idea that the way a lot of the stuff has went about, especially whenever it gets to actually using some of the special needs kids, event that happened with one of my children in particular being contacted, tried to get my vote on a certain way, which has nothing to do with the way that I'm gonna vote. I'd just rather that things that are on council stay on council and not involve any of us's personal lives or anything else. But if I personally ever had to do this, I never would've even enacted something like this, because they had never convinced me that us that live out in the country do not pay our fair share into the municipalities, because how do you conclude where any of us that live out in the country come and do our bidding? Everything we buy, we come to town to buy. So, we do pay into the municipalities to start with. And, you know, I'm not for any tax increases, but if we are gonna have a tax increase, it looks like it would be on more important things than just playing and entertainment. We all sit up here and told you we ain't got enough to fix roads and stuff and all now. But I've made that speech the other week about how all the important things don't get never talked about, but we sit here and it becomes playing and entertainment and it's the end of, the sky's falling. And it just amazes me, and I might, I'd tread lightly what I'm fixing to say here, since everybody worries about losing the Happy Meals and everything else, but I got seven young'uns and raised every one of them farming and working on equipment. And I ain't asked nobody to buy nothing for them. Lot of people been generous and brought them stuff and we thanked them, because you never, never, not never take a blessing. But if God gives you a child, it's your responsibility. And I think a lot of parents nowadays also, and I think it's wonderful that a child be able to play now. In my time growing up, we knew the difference between time to play and time to work. But, you know, as many times as there's a yes, there's a no. And some of the emails and all that I got, and if thirty dollars difference, either way this thing could go or whatnot breaks you to whether or not your child plays. And if even the factor, and even Andy wrote some numbers down that I thought was good when we sit there and was ciphering it out. Something ain't adding up, me telling the truth on this thing. I, I just, I, I can't, I can't go for it. Now, if it don't work out that way and, and think about the number of people that's gonna get taxed that don't even have no kids involved in all of this. I mean, Lord, I hear it enough just over the schools. I mean, you know, it, I think the whole thing's done got so far out of hand that it's actually kind of ridiculous. That's about all I got to say.
I'm gonna try not to rehash the points, but I guess we, we do have two things on the agenda, so I might as well speak about these now. I wanna say this first and foremost, we are so blessed to live in York County. We have nine municipalities, nine. Some folks don't realize we have nine municipalities in our county. And our community is so blessed with having a, a variety of options available to all of our people to, to do recreation. I do not support this amendment and I'm probably gonna be a, a broken record tonight. I'm not gonna support adding any new taxes or any new fees. In fact, I'm gonna make motions that may or may not pass that cut the budget. But with respect to this issue, I think one tax is better than two taxes. I'm not, and I think that, that this is gonna prove to provide greater accountability and fairness throughout the process. I think that the, one thing that I just have to get off my chest, it's come to my attention that some municipalities sent letters and emails to county residents asserting that the county and the council was planning not to provide any programming at all, funding for that. That's absolutely false, that's not true. And public record, if you go back and take a look at, at what council has talked about, we have made clear that that's not what we're doing here either. That concerns me and I think that, that causes problems with trying to, to work through things, but I'm committed to continuing to, to have that discussion. And again, those comments were made before any of those letters were sent. I, I do think as someone whose responsibility is to be a steward of the taxpayer dollar, it is not unreasonable to ask where has that funding been going? And if you don't know where it's been going and can't tell us where it's been going, that's further indicia of the problem. And I think what the management has, has proposed in terms of doing a countywide, evaluate the number for the programming fee and, and let's verify the numbers through the program users. Clearly, there's information out there because letters were sent out to people who use these, these facilities. Some folks don't even realize what we're talking about. I'm getting emails from lots of different people with lots of different ideas. Got seven people, seven, seven different opinions, seven different ideas, seven different ways to figure this out. I agree that we can't, you can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. And, and so, I support what management has put in the budget on this one. Some folks don't realize that for nearly twenty years, the only people that have paid this tax are folks who live in the unincorporated areas. And all that funding, funding was given to municipalities. At that point in time, the cities were largely the only ones providing that program. A lot of things have changed. There are private programming efforts. Other cities have started providing programming. There are folks that use their YMCA, so a lot of people are using different places to go get their programming. I also think that the rec tax funding being such a contentious issue, you know, there's some debate about what was that funding for, because you go back and you look now and it's very broad, the way it's written. But the reality is, the purpose of it was to ensure that kids who lived in the unincorporated area, youth, were not charged twice as much to participate in the active sports programs. And so, now, now the question's being asked, well, was this for disability programs or was this for senior programs? To me, when you have the municipalities all together saying, hey, we need to divide this program funding based upon school cap, based upon the population of the school, school kids, that's, that's been the recommendation that's been made for the last three years. And so, I, I'm real concerned that there is this, this red, this, this messaging going out that somehow these other programs are gonna suffer when we haven't been provided the details, that that's, that's accurate. I certainly support those things. Our council has been out and supported a lot of the things that the municipalities have done. I personally think that we should look at that, but, but to say that this funding was, was designed for that, that's not consistent with the way that it's been used and the way that it's been proposed to be divided by the people who are now coming to us, asking those questions. So, I am, I'm, I'm frustrated and I'm, I'm disappointed that, that those letters and emails went out. I think that that's not, that's not genuine and at the end of the day, I think because there was no ability after five years, I think it seems like it's been longer than that, to come up with a formula that works for all, we have to do something different. And I, I also think that it's important to, that some folks understand, through the data that's been received thus far, what we're seeing is that some unincorporated residents are being charged more per capita than out of, out of county people for the same program. Some city residents who are participating in another city program, which are, a lot of them, they're not paying this tax, but they're benefiting from a subsidy. How, how are we gonna unpack that? Many of the program residents that we're seeing now, who, who were thought to be unincorporated residents, are actually not unincorporated residents. And so, but when you're taxing only one little group, you gotta make sure that that's going for that benefit. So, you have to, you have to be able to have that information. And, and at the end of the day, none of this funding that was taxed on unincorporated residents is being used to fund the unincorporated parks that exist and that we're trying to, to provide some additional amenities. So, I think each entity, instead of taxing and pulling taxes from each other, needs to operate on their own tax basis so that it's, that it's, makes sense. But to suggest that council doesn't support these things is just not, is not true. I think we are trying to work through that, but I can't, I can't support the amendment or any increased taxes. I think I had a couple more comments that I, I do think are important to make. I think I had a couple more comments that I, I do think are important to make. But I, I'll, I'll end it with that. So, so what we have on the table right now is an amendment to increase, to increase the budget by one point five mils to go back to the unincorporated millage. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The amendment fails. Do we have any other amendments?
So, yeah, I do.
All right.
Yep. So we had some amazing presenters in regards to budget request. Last time in our meeting under our workshop. A couple of those, again, I want to point them out. One of them being Safe Passage. Safe Passage has supplied amazing support to families and better women, et cetera, across the community. Incredible work. You also had Catawba Mental Health. The work they've done in the community has been incredible with, again, the challenges of mental health and, and what they, and how they've addressed that and, and to help these people. Because again, if they don't get the help they need, we end up seeing it on, on, you know, other areas, and it impacts the entire community. Again, great work. And lastly Keystone. Keystone works with the youth in the high schools around fentanyl education, et cetera. So out of those three, I would like, I would like to do an amendment to, on their request, for, for example Keystone, they've asked for a total of one hundred, one hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. That's an increase of sixty-three thousand five hundred from their budget. I would like to at least meet them halfway because the programs they're doing in the schools is phenomenal, and I think it's a great benefit. Safe Passage, they're currently getting one hundred thousand. They asked for two hundred. I think we should meet them halfway at a hundred and fifty. Catawba Mental Health, they're currently getting one hundred. I think we should meet, and they're asking for two hundred. We should meet them halfway at one fifty. What they're doing in the community, again, is, is some incredible work with the public. Lastly, as part of this amendment, I would like to request we do support, through the coroner's office, one evidence technician. The request had come through last year, we didn't approve it. Their numbers speak for what they have to do out there. It's amazing. So I think it's well needed that they have additional evidence tech. So that would be my request.
Would you consider adding the CVB and their request into our budget?
The CVB, and that would be?
Full amount they requested.
Well, you know, it's funny, it wasn't on this list here. But I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and modify. And again, I don't think that, I think CBV's doing some amazing work. I think we, we could make them, go ahead. I'm sorry, you want to say something?
I, I might separate that because there is a different process related to that, and we can explain that for a later motion.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Just because there's a, a second tranche.
Yeah, I thought there was. So again, these are the four compact asks I have as part of an amendment to our budget.
Second.
So just so I'm clear to restate the motion, the, but what are the, what are the entities?
So Keystone, they currently get forty thousand, they ask for one hundred two five, one hundred two thousand five hundred. We meet them halfway at seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Safe Passage, they're currently getting one hundred, they ask for two hundred. We meet them at one fifty. Catawba Mental Health, they're currently getting one hundred, they're asking two hundred. We meet them at one fifty. And then the additional one evidence tech for the coroner's office.
All right, so we have a motion in a second on those requests. Any discussion?
I'll just mention on the evidence tech, she did email us back, the coroner emailed us back and said that she'd be willing to hire a civilian evidence tech, which means that the salary would be a little less, and they would not qualify for police retirement, so it would lessen our expense there.
Okay.
So.
No, that's good.
If you, if you want to go with your motion, or you want to revise it, or?
No, I think it, it's, it's a, it's a motion.
Okay.
I would just like to throw it to staff to say, have y'all been giving us information and see how we can work these numbers into the budget or out of the budget?
This, this is the first we've, we've heard this motion. We can obviously look at adding this into the budget. We want to make sure we hear everybody tonight, but if y'all are voting for us to go find this money, we'll.
I, I think it's.
We, we heard about two hundred and fifty thousand of expenses that were just shared us.
Well, actually, the additional would be one sixty-two five plus their coroner's position because it's asked, because we've already allotted a hundred. He's asked for one fifty, one fifty, and sixty-two five more. My, my concern is, I can't vote for an amendment and pass it tonight without staff having had time to say, hey, this is how we can work it, this is where we can find the money. So I think you have to give staff the heads up so that they can go find ways to, whether we're moving money around, or bringing something else, or getting rid of something. You know, we, we can't pass a, we can't pass an amendment if we don't know if we're gonna have the funding in the budget or available for the budget to see it through. So I think we need to get our amendments to staff prior to showing up on Monday night and throwing it in their lap and say, hey, now we gotta vote on it. And if we vote for it, we put them in a predicament of whether, hey, well, we, we, I know y'all voted for it, but we can't really do that. Then we have to come back and, because there're gonna be downstream effects. If we give more money here, we're gonna obviously have to take some from somewhere else. So I think we gotta get, I'm trying to avoid what we had, what happened last year at third reading. We throw everything on the staff, throw everything on council. We're voting left and right, and, you know, it was, it was, you know, that's not the way it's supposed to work. Let's get our amendments to staff to see how we can work them in. That makes it a much smoother budget process. So I can't support a motion if I don't know if the funds gonna be there or if staff can work it out. So I'll, I'll be a no on this one. Only because we don't know the information of, of how it, it's gonna move the numbers.
Okay, we'll just keep going down the line. Whoever wants, do you have anything to say? We're gonna go down the line.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're making requests then, that's what you're saying?
No, we're going down the line.
These are amendments.
The question on the table is, is the, an amendment to increase the budget for those four purposes was made. That's what we're debating, and I'm gonna let everybody speak once that wants to.
So being new to this process, I, I agree with what Councilman Roddy said, that I would like to know what we're gonna have to do to be able to fund these opportunities. I fully agree with the opportunities and, but I don't know that I want to lose them out of a, out of something else that may be a higher priority. So, and I, and I hate to wait till the third reading also. You know, if it, well, I would just hate to lose funding somewhere else by voting to approve this and then being stuck with it.
Yeah, we gotta get it to the staff. We, we're in, keep going down the line. Everybody speak, if they want, do y'all, do y'all want to?
Well, I mean, I don't want staff to back up, but I mean, I mean, if, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna, like I say, approve anything if we don't know it can't be done.
Well, I want to give staff time too. Are we, is, are we doing all of this?
No, the motion on the, the motion on the table was for those four, the increase on those four areas.
Okay. And then I, I want to talk about the fact that I don't want to have a tax increase countywide. And how, how would we, how would that look? How would that look? And where would we get the funding to not have a countywide tax increase? And I, I know somewhere in all this paperwork here, because I, I actually did bring my budget, but there's gotta be some ins and outs here. I've heard some suggestions possibly is looking at the millage rate. We've been very conservative with our millage rate. Maybe we work with that. We do have the economic fund, economic development fund that we could work with. So there, I know there's lots of things that we could do to, so we don't have a tax increase countywide. But I don't know how to put that into the form of a motion. And I don't know if it's appropriate to put it into a motion right now.
You'll, okay. I, I don't support, I'm, I don't support the motion. And like I said before, there are a ton of things. I think these, these Keystone, Safe Passage is one that's near and dear to my heart. And Catawba Mental Health, I think there's a lot of folks that have made, made requests for additional staff. I know that management has looked through and tried to help identify where we can and can't do those things. I'm not, again, I'm not gonna support anything that will add anything to the budget tonight. So I think for purposes of, I, I don't think that it's a slight, but if, if someone wants to raise that apparently and get some information at, at third, my concern is that once you start going down this, this road, there are a lot of other very worthy organizations that have also requested funding. But on this motion, I think we need to move forward. All those in.
Well, I want to resend my motion at this point.
You're gonna rescind it?
Yeah, I'm gonna resend it, and I'm gonna modify the motion. I'm gonna do a motion to request staff to look at these four items. Basically looking at the thirty-one thousand dollar difference for Keystone, thirty-one thousand five hundred difference for Keystone, the fifty thousand dollar difference for Safe Passage, and the fifty thousand dollar difference for Catawba Mental Health, and the one evidence tech for the coroner's office.
I think for purposes of a point of order, if, is, changing the motion, is the person who seconded it supportive of that?
Yes.
We're not gonna re-debate this though. I mean, I think.
But I don't think that we need a motion.
That's not a motion.
They're saying they don't need a motion for that.
So you, so you're not requiring a motion for that? I'm gonna withdraw, I'm gonna withdraw the motion, and I'm gonna request that you go ahead and look at that. And that way we can come back with numbers on it, and then we can have a discussion about it in the next meeting.
And like we do after every meeting, we'll have a budget follow-up report that I'll know how to.
Well, and I, and I thank you for doing that. And I think that, I mean, I think this has been a good discussion because I think we probably need to have that kind of process. If this is, this is my concern. If we're putting it forward amendments and we're not gonna vote on it because we don't, we're saying no to it, when we don't have the information, I think then we need to look at how we process this as a recommendation for next reading. That way we're not getting a bunch of no's before we even have the answer on that, so.
But I, I have a request too.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna let everybody have them. Is it related to that amendment?
No, I thought we were over with that one.
Are we done?
We're done.
Okay.
Yep.
You want to go next?
Yeah, I want to go next.
All right, Mr. Atkins.
All right, I would like to put in a request that you look at the Cooperative Extension Service on hiring their extra help for the four H. Since we have got the largest group in the state now.
Okay. Do we have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and get my amendment out of the way. This is kind of out of order, but I want, unless, unless somebody else is ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, we'll let you go.
I'm gonna try this, we'll see how well this works out. I make a, a motion to reallocate sixty thousand dollars of the H tax to fund the Nannies Mountain Master Plan.
Nannies Mountain Master Plan?
Yes.
You want a second now, or you're gonna keep going?
No, that was, that was my.
Do we need a, do we need to ask the same question about funding? Or is that, is that in the?
Well, I heard Councilmember mention, mentioned reallocation. I guess the question's reallocation from where?
Reallocation from.
You said H tax.
The Field Day Park allocation. Is that gonna mess it up?
We'd have to adjust their millage to do that, but something we could do, something y'all could vote on.
I'm okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
So I would just clarify that.
Go ahead.
I think just for, for the, the county attorney and the manager's office, if you could clarify the motion to include the adjustment of the millage.
Okay. So I'm, do I, a whole new motion or amend it?
I think you're saying to clarify that you're, because you're gonna create one from out of balance.
All right. Then I would like to clarify that the reallocation would be from the Field Day Park H tax allocation and would include a millage of the Lake Wiley Recreation Tax Millage Rate.
Second. Will you explain what you shared with us as to why you're asking for this, which?
So the reason I'm asking for this is that, so Nannies Mountain was bought in nineteen ninety-seven by the county, or gotten as a park from, in nineteen ninety-seven. In twenty twenty-one, there were county staff, there was a little bit of stuff before it, but after, in twenty twenty-one, county staff and some of the departments put together a master plan for this facility. And it's a, it's a mountain over in the Lake Wiley Clover area. You say Clover. For my Clover people, it's kind of Clover, but it's Lake Wiley. It's over on Highway two seventy-four. And, you know, it's just a nice little natural area. And so the county staff put together a nice master plan for it. In twenty twenty-two, at the very beginning of twenty twenty-two, in one of the meetings, it got deferred, or in twenty twenty-one it got deferred. In twenty twenty-two, it got deferred out of a committee by a council member because there were better things coming for it. And, and since then, it's just really sat there and, and festered around. It's a very small project that would get a lot of benefit if we could just finish up this master plan. Staff really put a lot of their heart into this. They took ownership of this project when they did this master plan, and they have expressed the disappointment they had that this plan was just kicked off out of the queue of, of projects and never brought back. And so this would really help to boost their morale, showing that we, we care about what they're doing, and we would also get a project actually completed. You know, it's not, there's no sense in just, it's such a miniscule or small amount of work and such small funds that we could just get it completed, and then we don't have to kick it down the road anymore, and it will be there for the community and for the county residents to enjoy. A place to hike, get nice views of the surrounding area, and just a quiet place that you can meditate or, you know, just enjoy nature, which we don't, you know, don't have enough of those places. And this one is ready, it's, it's shovel-ready. So I really would like to just get it done.
Now, my question would be, is this to continue with the plan? Or are we putting something out there, are we spending sixty K on, on items or finishing developing the plan?
To construct.
Oh, to construct, okay.
To construct the master plan, if I was clear on that. This was to construct it. Staff has in the past, they've been spending their, their time, when they have free time, and their efforts in going out there and working on this on their own. And, and finding whatever little bit of funds that they have in their departments that could be used for this. They're going out there and trying to get this done. They really do care about this project, and I would just like to help them along with it.
Any other discussion? I think the, the other discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I just think, I mean, I, I think this has been a good discussion tonight. I think overall, we should have probably talked about how we want to proceed with these amendments more. And I, and I think how you did it, Andy, I think was great to offset that. I probably, you know, if, but I think this has been a good discussion, and I think we need to understand the process of, of, of these things, not as much as of amendment, to make sure that when we make these amendments, we're not withdrawing these things knowing that it should have been a different process. The last thing we can do is amend, offer something as an amendment and lose on it when it was a, when it is a good idea, but the process itself wasn't identified upfront. So that's my concern. Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure. I think, I think council's free to make the decisions that they want to make here. I think if folks want the answer to the question, what I heard of council say they wanted answers to the questions. what I heard the council say, they wanted answers to the questions before they would commit to a vote on that. Not that that's a committed policy, like, process that needs to be followed, but-
I think what people asked was how are we gonna fund your amendment? I think what this last motion made clear was the funding for that amendment.
So, so this amendment is revenue neutral, it's borrowing from one, but I'm just, to me, it seems like we ought, for that amount of funding, I definitely support making sure that we have the planning tools. I will support, I will support the motion since it's revenue neutral. I think that we probably should try to find a way to do both of, both of what we're talking about. And for, for such a, an amount, I mean, I think we ought to do that. But since it's revenue neutral, I'll support it. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? The amendment carries.
Madam Chair.
Have you finished any of your amendments?
I am.
I wanna make sure we don't, we'll make one stop.
Right. I have one amendment and possibly, okay. I'll throw it out there anyway, maybe it'll help, maybe it'll help staff, maybe it won't. For the evidence technician, I make a, a motion to amend the budget by removing the capital budget analyst from the county manager's office and using that funding to put in place the evidence technician for the coroner.
Y'all are looking at me. So, so with every position that I've submitted in my recommended budget, we have a position justification form. I'm, I'm happy to share that with y'all. I know y'all have reviewed the budget, I appreciate that. And the new position list is on the back. I do understand that council might not approve of all positions, and I understand you've got to assess the budget and provide your feedback. So I understand that and appreciate the feedback. The goal of this position is really to help us centralize how we fund capital projects, to manage those capital projects, and then to work with the departments that manage those projects. I do want to encourage more of a centralized approach to our operations as we are a mid-sized county, and our government doesn't necessarily have the positions for us to operate as a mid-sized county. And we lose some of that effectiveness and efficiency. I do understand it's different to move towards that model, and, and I understand that if there's a prioritization that needs to happen, that some of these positions might be, need to be taken off. But I hope you don't think that I put in positions in there that I don't think we need. But I do respect y'all's opinion on this. I'm happy to share the position justifications for any of these positions with y'all. They're each probably four or five pages. And I know I've shared some of these with some of y'all as you've asked questions. And so we are trying to move this county to a certain place. This position would help, but I understand it might not be the year for it. So with that, I'll take any questions.
There's, there's been a motion that, that is eliminating something and replacing it. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I will say that it's a little bit in, in contradiction to, I mean, trying to find the funding for it is a, is a bit of an issue in the context of the second reading. I'll say that I, I, one of the things that I'm, that I support is, is elimination of that position. I just, I'm not gonna be able to-
Put it back here.
Support where that goes necessarily. Is there any other discussion on this item?
Yeah. I'll just say, you know, our, our budget team and our staff spend a tremendous amount of time looking at each department, what their needs are. I've been, over the past years, I've been more, more so to follow the county manager's recommendation because they're the ones who, in detail, looking at these departments, knowing whether it's that department head coming and sitting down with them, going over and getting a county manager's professional penis to where these positions need to go. If we're gonna eliminate it, and there's gonna be some things that can get adjusted because there's gonna be some positions that's probably been asked for, that's probably not gonna maintain because we're trying to get to a point of not raising taxes. So we're gonna lose some of these positions, and we can't start picking them off one by one and then add them somewhere else. I'm gonna entrust our county manager and his team, when we send them back in the back room to say, hey, we gotta cut 1.5, we gotta cut two mils out of this budget. We're looking for them to come back and say, hey, this is what we're proposing to do to get to the level that we don't have to raise taxes. I don't wanna be the one that's plucking them out. I think that's what we hired you for, to give us that recommendation. But I don't wanna just start moving pieces around and going against your best judgment as to where we need personnel. I think it's, it's incumbent upon you and your team to do that work.
I won't repeat what you said, but I concur.
Any other discussion? So again, this is a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know what we're voting on.
And, and if, if y'all could clarify, too. I know previously another councilmember said something about the evidence tech being a different grade, but you didn't clarify that in your motion.
Yeah, let's get-
Okay, you didn't want, okay.
The motion is to amend the budget to eliminate the capital budget analyst position and to add into it the evidence technician position. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The amendment fails. Do we have any more? Okay.
All I ask is that when we know how much money we have in ATAX, that we consider following the same structure that Councilman Aldette mentioned, awarding half of the requested amount. So right now, the CVB receives 405,000, they're asking for 600, so that's $97,500 if we follow the same logic that we increase their budget 97.5 after they have a chance to look at the ATAX and tell us if we can actually afford to do that. So it's a, it's a future request, because we don't know if the money's there yet. We don't know what it is.
And I'll just update council that that committee, ATAX committee, is meeting this week. And so there will be before y'all at third reading the committee's recommendations. And again, this has to go through that committee. The committee's recommendations, management's recommendations for y'all to consider. And as y'all have done in the past over years, you can sort of, just like you're doing now, go by line by line, but you'll have a set pot of money to allocate out.
You know, let me say one other thing right quick, too, is that whether-
Is this your motion? Is this your motion?
It's tied into it. It's tied into it. I wish I could find my notes on what was shared with us about our financial position as a county, and I can't find it. I've been flipping through and I cannot find it. But I'd love to hear that report again. When, I guess it was the last budget year, we talked about how lean we were and comparing York County to other counties. We were the leanest county in the state of South Carolina. We had less debt than any other counties in the state of South Carolina. And there's nothing wrong with that, that's great. I mean, personally, you hope that everybody operates their personal budgets, and the budgets of companies that way, right? You wanna stay lean and be prepared to take action when you need to take action on something that benefits, in this case, the county long-term. But I think unfortunately, on the heels of putting a strategic plan together, when you put a strategic plan together, that means you put initiatives together, you put structure together, you get an organizational chart, you see where your holes are, and you gotta start filling them. And you can't fill them all in one year, you gotta do it in two, three, four, five years. It's a process. It's, it, we're, we're going through a catch-up plan. And I'm, I'm not in favor of taxation, but if you got needs, you have needs. And if you continue to put those needs off, then you're putting off a future expense. It only gets bigger. It's like that snowball rolling down the hill. And that snowball's already been rolling down the hill, and we need it to, we need it to roll in a different direction for a little bit and slow down so that we could potentially catch up with our parks and everything else that we're talking about tonight. So anyway, going back to the ATAX. So if you all will agree, I'd like for them, it wasn't a motion, it's just we're waiting for the, the number, which I guess you'll know this week, is that right? You'll know what the ATAX number is this week?
The allocation from the committee-
Right.
Will be back this week after the meet, and we'll put that information together. And I imagine that's gonna be part of the follow-up report that'll go out to you. Y'all are looking and ready for that before next meeting.
So if $97,500 can be paid out of that, that's what I'm suggesting for the CVB. I tell you, you talk about return on your investment, I mean, listen to it again upstairs a minute ago. It's unbelievable what they're doing with promoting York County. And I realize that the, the, the funding change for them. But quite honestly, to the defense of them, it's leadership. It's leadership that has turned the corner with the CVB. Nothing, not saying negative about anybody that served in leadership with the CVB, but, but under Andy's leadership, they're doing a phenomenal job. You talk about return on your investment. When, when things are coming into York County and he's able to promote them this way and give you the data to show you what they've done, what'd he say upstairs? That one, the one ad had 400 million hits, is that right? Yeah, that's pretty phenomenal.
Well, I'll just say, if, obviously if the money's there, I don't, I don't see a problem being able to do what Watts was asking to do.
Okay, are there any other amendments?
Thank you.
Proposed amendments? All right, all right. First of all, I want to say to this, I wanna, I wanna thank our county manager for a fantastic job with this budget, for all of the work that you've put in this. You have done a tremendous job. I really do think the world of you. I appreciate the, the professionalism that you bring to our council. I appreciate the methodology that you bring. And I do not envy your position because we are behind in some things, and we've got to get up to speed. I think that, in my mind, as, as someone who, and, and I hate to even suggest that we mess up what has been presented. At the same time, I think that, and, and I'll say, I think you've done what council has, has asked you to do, and you've looked in these things and prioritized them. For me personally, I cannot raise taxes unless it is the absolute last resort to do that. And, and there will be times where, where I, I will support doing that. In this particular case, and I've, I'm, I'm still holding out that there's some other things that can be done, but I had to work all night and all to try and, and figure out how to do this to eliminate one and a half mils. So my motion is, is gonna be, well, and before I do that, let me say this. I think we do need a motion on the parks issue, on the fun, the park access for residents, the options that were given. Do we need to have a, a motion to approve those changes to ensure that it, what was provided in the, at the workshop?
Are you, are you talking about fees?
Yes, the fees.
We would need a motion for fees.
You, you do need a-
We do have a set or no one? We do some options.
I think we've got to make a motion to include it into the, the current budget. I think the discussion that was had was to ask management to come back with some options on how to ensure that everyone who visits the county parks, that they aren't charged that, that they made suggestions. And I know that, did, did y'all take away from the workshop a unified?
We did not, there was not a vote. I think we gave y'all information with the intention that you would vote on a recommendation.
I thought there was a consensus from council on kind of where we wanted to end up on that.
No, it just came up in our last meeting.
So we're gonna have to figure that out. I don't, I don't have a prepared motion for that. I guess we can do that at, at final reading, but that's-
At our workshop meeting, Council McLuninger suggested that we not have a fee for our citizens to enter into our parks.
Yeah, I think we had several of us, yeah.
Because we're passing a 1.5 mil county-wide tax, so you're already taxing them there, I think.
They came up with the, they came up with options. If we aren't prepared to that motion, we just don't need to forget it on third then, if, if we're not prepared to do that. But I think the whole point was to ensure that every, every, everyone in the county had equal access and that it was reduced and that we increased the non-resident fees to account for any of the changes. So it was revenue neutral. But we can be prepared, council will be prepared to do that next time. With respect to the budget, I'm, I'm gonna move to amend the budget to reduce the general operation expenses by 1.5 mils in the following fashion. Eliminate the capital budget analyst from account 11041320 in the amount of $142,061. Eliminate the marketing manager position in the amount of $107,292. Eliminate the planning position from account 1104192 in the amount of $141,972. Eliminate a total of $266,675 in one-time expenses for studies within planning. Those are respectively $100,000, $91,675, and $75,000. And then also eliminate the $350,000 facility study, public works study, and direct that management explore whether these studies can be done in-house. And if they cannot, then that we, that council, that, and if not, that these funds be approved by council as a later date as a non-recurring one-time expense rather than a GO recurring expense. I'd direct that any county position in the general operation budget that has been vacant for more than four years, that the position be eliminated and it have to be reinstituted. I would direct that 1 million in the ED Felo revenue be directed to fund the ED department and off, eliminate the GO funding expenses for this amount and to increase the projected value of mil by 15, excuse me, by $17,500. And, and my request would be that, that this be in, in priority list to get to that, to that millage.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have discussion.
I'll say, in all fairness and transparency, Chairperson Cox and I did discuss some of these changes to try to get to the point that we're not raising taxes. And I knew it was coming up about eliminating some positions versus moving positions around. Obviously, she's worked tirelessly on finding ways to trim the budget so that we don't have to increase the millage or increase the taxes. I did have one question about increasing the value of the mil. Did I hear you correctly say an increase?
That's correct, and that's by $17,500.
Okay. I'll have to get a little more between second and third as to that impact. But the goal here was to not raise the taxes, but we are kicking the can down the road on some things. But those things are not at a critical juncture that we can go back and do the next time around. And I'll be the first to admit, we took a ton of calls, ton of emails, kicking us and screaming about increasing taxes. But I, I've rolled with the punches the last several years, but at some point, if we're gonna continue to provide world-class, first-class, all these top-rated services, all these top-rated amenities, and make sure our staff is professional, that comes with a cost. We can't keep always kicking some things down. Now, positions that's on the books that haven't been filled for quite a while yet, they need to come off because apparently we're operating without filling those for quite some time. But it's gonna come a point that the curve is gonna bend backwards of doing more with less people, providing less, providing more services with less people. We got more people moving here. The demand for certain things are gonna increase. And the only way that we can keep up and do it in such a manner that we know we want it, that professional level to be done, we're gonna have to bring more people on board. We're gonna have to charge a little more. So while we've been enjoying the rollback millage last several times, where we've been cutting positions, there's gonna come a point, we're gonna have, just council's gonna have to make a decision, and we're gonna have to face the music with the phone calls, with the political pressures. It's got to happen. You know, we do it when we can, but at a certain juncture, we gotta look that voter in, in eye and be honest and be transparent that, hey, we can't continue to do it at this rate. And it's gonna take some gumption to do it because those voters are gonna say, I'm gonna vote you out. Those voters are gonna say, we're gonna kick you out. But in all fairness, if you're being open and honest with the voters, letting them know, this is what it is. We're not raising taxes just to raise taxes when we do it. And I've been up here 14 years, probably tell by the gray. We've been reluctant to do it, we've rolled it back when we can. But when the time comes, we have to do it in order to keep pace. We have to do it in order to keep pace because we give raises. We gave a, a nice raise to our sheriff department. We like to give raises to our personnel. Because we fought for a long time- Because we fought for a long time, training people, we, we were a training ground. People get, cut their teeth in a certain department, a certain area. We weren't paying enough, they go jump into private sector, make more money. So we've made sure we've amped up our raises and things to get good quality people to stay here with us. And I think we've done right by employees, but at a time, we're going to have to ante up and ask for a little more out of our taxpayers. But I certainly, um, support the motion, uh, but I will be getting with, with Kevin and Josh to find out the impact of increasing the value of the mil by 17, 17 grand.
So let me just say that, uh, I cannot support this motion. While I think that staff can use some of those ideas to try to come up with the funding that we've asked for, the idea that we're raising taxes is not wholly being conveyed clearly. So we are not raising taxes in the general, on the overall, to county members. The only people getting a tax increase are the people in the municipalities. They are getting the 1.5 mils. To not have a tax increase on somebody that's never paid the tax is impossible. Well, it's not impossible. Let me just say that the way to do that is to reduce the taxes on the county or the, uh, unincorporated residents. But we're already shortchanging our, uh, residents. I mean, look at our roads. We can't, we're not even funding our roads to get them improved. We've got allocations out there that we're not taking care of. We've made these long-range plans that we're not going to fund, but because we're adding what is a fair tax on top of, uh, the municipalities that have been getting a ride with not having to pay it and to now, uh, cut our budget to try to offset that, I, I just, I can't agree with that whatsoever. So I, I will not be supporting this motion.
So just to clarify, the 1.5 mil countywide tax, that's $2,900, $2,955,000. So you're saying that you, you have found $2,955,000 to cut out of our budget?
Correct, that was part of my motion.
All right.
Well, we, we would have to do the math and we, we haven't been able to-
Roughly 1.5 mils, that's, anyway.
You're correct, but in terms of what you're recommending, you're actually recommending an increase in revenue.
That's the intent. Don't tell me if my math is wrong.
Well, the chair's actually recommending an increase of a million dollars in revenue based on increasing the value of the mil. So it's not cutting all of that, it's adding to.
It's, it's actually increasing the value of the mil based upon the, of what, um, that small portion was to, uh, account for and to be in line with the interest income that's been updated as well as, um, the, uh, underestimation of tax revenues as well as the overestimation of expenses, so.
So, um, I'm going to agree with some of the comments that were made. I think we are at a critical juncture. I agree with you 100%. And, um, I think there is a demand for increases. There was a demand for increases last year when we had the 4.4 mils and we kept some of that. Uh, but we gave a lot of it back to the taxpayers. And last year, a lot of the items in our budget this year were in our budget request last year that we didn't fund. So now we're paying the piper. We're, we kicked the can down the road and, uh, now the can stopped and we need to deal with it, that's for sure. I said earlier, I'm not about increasing taxes. I didn't get elected to get re-elected. I'm just trying to do the right thing, trying to make the right decisions for all the citizens of York County. I don't mean to offend anybody, but that's just the position I stand by consistently. There was mention of taking a million dollars from our ED fund. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Economic Development, just saying. So I take, I take this one a little personal. The ED fund was established, if you go back and read the purpose of the ED fund, the ED fund was established for us to take that money and invest it in companies that want to make York County their home. Now, we haven't been doing that, but we need to be doing that. Because you know why? Uniquely to us, that generates property taxes. The same property taxes that York would like to create, Clover would like to create, Tegah Kay and Fort Hill would like to create new property taxes. Right? Because it helps drive your budget and fund your parks that, 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 we wore that one out earlier, but the municipalities are looking for money to fund their own parks, right? And you fund it, we bring an industry in. So to suggest that we take money out of an ED fund that invest in businesses coming into York County, the kind, the type of business that we want, I don't think that's a good suggestion. Um, so I, I, I can't support this either. Uh, I appreciate the, um, I appreciate the intent behind what you're trying to accomplish. But I, I think we've passed the point where we can ignore the needs of this county. We hired a county manager who's doing, you've all said it, and then we laid the boom, but he's done a great job. And what he's doing is he's trying to plan ahead. And to plan ahead, you have to build the organizational chart. You have to get your support staff in place to carry things out efficiently. And that's what he's doing. He hasn't put every position in there that he needs. There's more coming next year and the following year. This is kind of like last year, we had a grant to fund the evidence-based person for the coroner's, the coroner's office. We had a grant to fund it. Now, I know this year we had said, okay, the grant paid for it last year, how do we pay for it this year? We'd have to figure that out. But we gave up a grant to fund this last year. And by the way, there's no grant to fund it this year. Anyway, I can't, uh, I can't support this either. Thank you.
So I think the, what was proposed, the intent of it is, 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 I think it's excellent. I think it's, it's finding a way to pay what you want to do and offset the difference in taxes. I think it's, um, you know, I thought you spent a lot of time going through, I thought it was very good. The, the challenge, I think, with this one, and I'm going to just piggyback off of what Watts said, you know, when it comes to the ED fund, the opportunity from the ED fund is to drive and bring in businesses, not only the tax revenue from businesses, but the jobs. And, and utilization of that, um, is key to drive new opportunities for the people, the public. So, you know, at this point, with that being part of it, I can, I cannot support it tonight. I would probably recommend the, you know, that the staff looks at the overall number and maybe comes back to us with recommendations based on the, the amount of money that we need to offset. That would be my recommendation, um, off of that. But again, I just can't support it until, uh, we identify how we want to close up that $1 million gap, so.
I'm going to go back and talk about the economic fund, uh, Economic Development Fund. The short time I've been on here, um, I haven't seen, um, I haven't seen it used in a very wise, um, way. Plus, I should have said this before, if we use, uh, the Economic Development Fund, it, I would like to see it used for the Economic Development Group to fund them, to let them be self-sufficient. And that way, they can, and, and this is actually what I thought when I did some research, um, back a year or so ago, what that fund should have been used for, is the, um, some impact of some of the, um, businesses that came in here, uh, possibly for improvements of roads that they have, you know, ruined our roads, but also to, um, fund the Economic Development Group. That was what I understood.
That's how.
So that's why I, I mentioned that, to take the Economic Development Fund to put it to, um, support the Economic Development Group.
The salaries or activities?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think that's part of how she sees using it.
So what I would say is the ED committee's been doing hard work with Mitch, uh, our Economic Development Director, to come up with criteria to utilize those funds. And that was something y'all made clear in the strategic plan last summer that you wanted us to do. Y'all have been working hard on that. So if you decide to utilize this funding, there, you know, we're talking about a significant portion of those, those filo funds will go towards the operations of the Economic Development Department. Right now, I think the transfer from the general fund, uh, to fund the operations is 1,806,000 for ED. Uh, and so you're shifting most of the operations of ED to, to that funding mechanism. Uh, I think there's a sunk cost to that. I think that sunk cost is what you've heard and what we're trying to do and what Mitch has been here many late nights trying to get tease out of y'all is, who do we want to be recruiting? What's our vision? And how do we fund it? That's the, those are the funds to do that. And so there's a sunk cost to making that, that decision. I wanted to make that clear.
If we can, if, can, can we let every council member speak first before we?
I'm going to get back to something.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah.
So, I think since some comment, a couple of things, just to clarify, there, the motion included three positions and then the studies that were mentioned should be paid from a one-time fund instead of recurring fund. That was the request, so the studies aren't gone. It's to use a different fund if we can't do it in-house. Um, with the, I think the, the ED filo fund, um, I want to make sure that folks understand this is not taking the C-Fund money away where there's already requests that have been made. There's currently 4 million in that account, um, in the other ED fund. And, um, I, my understanding is that the revenue from that is going to increase significantly. So in the next two years, even with that funding amount, that there's still going to be a revenue stream there. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, I, I would say that's going to slow the growth of the ED fund. So I think Kevin shared that we're averaging 1.3 million coming into the fund a year. So you might have a $4 million fund balance, but now you're going to use most of the new money coming in to fund the ED department. And so you will lose the ability to do something transformative, is all I'm trying to say.
I know, a couple of weeks ago, I asked the question of staff to, to report back some of the criterias that had to be met in order to spend with a business was, a business was coming in and wanted to use some of our ED funds. Have we formulated that criteria?
That, that's what I was sharing, that, that's what the ED committee's working on and we're getting really close to bringing forward options and criteria for that. So that's what I was clarifying.
Because I, I, I kind of understand that the, the moving of the fund or not using the funds for one, but something else, because we do have the C-Funds that, part of our C-Funds every year from every council. Some of it goes over into that, that C-Fund that Economic Development can use. And so we're not totally turning our back on those funds. It's just now if a business wanted or needed help with some road improvements or egress lanes or whatever, we still have those C-Funds that could still address some of those needs and not just rely on the money that's in the Economic Development pot. Because we have basically two tranches of money sitting there that could be used for the same exact thing. And I think what Madam Chair's suggestion is, we take this pot and fund the department and solely rely on the C-Funds to do any kind of road work that may need to be done.
I think you'd have to go back and redefine the ED fund and the ordinance that drives the ED fund. You'd have to go back and redefine it.
I think, not to make, not, I, I think, not to make this motion because it was made last time, so I assumed that it had been run through. I, here's what I'll say, and, and this was after spending, I, I, I'll say it again. Um, I think that raising taxes should be an absolute last resort and we're getting very close to that. This was, this was something, and I will tell you, between now and third reading, if there's a better place to, to, to find that funding, if this is approved and there's a better place to find the funding than, from that fund, then I'm certainly, I'm still looking, but this is where, I, I mean, this is the motion. We still have a good bit of business left tonight on the agenda. I think we just need to call for, um, call for the vote on this motion and, and we still have third reading. All in favor of the amendment?
I have, I have one more thing. If we took the ED funds off the table and still did away with the other positions and delayed some of the studies, would that help some stomach, the, the idea of what the intent is?
Our estimate is that you're about a million away if you do that, but again, we've got, we've got to run the math. We also don't know how many positions have been vacant for four years. So we couldn't tell you what that, that savings would be.
All is in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Okay, go, explain what we're voting on.
The motion is to reduce one and a half mils from the budget.
Okay, now say it again.
All is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Um, motion, the amendment carries four to three. Um, that pulls us back to the, the main amendment and, and approval of the budget. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. I don't think everybody voted.
Motion.
I don't think so either. Sorry, I was, I was mentioning something to Josh, I don't even know what the motion was.
Motion, we're back to the main motion on the budget.
Okay.
All the amendments are done.
Yep, no.
Start over.
Motion, motion carries four to three.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You good? She's good.
Madam Chair, I got to apologize. I got to drive back down to Charleston, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to leave. So I wish you all the best with everything else you all have to deal with tonight. Thank you.
Save troubles.
Can I drop you down? I'll leave with you. I'm going to go ahead and drive Watts down to Charleston, so I'm going to leave with you.
All right, we move now to item number two in old business. Council to provide, provide second reading of an ordinance to abolish the special tax district known as the York County Recreation Tax District in York County effective as of December 31st, 2025, as described more particularly herein, to specify the time and application of the final levy of taxes for the operation and maintenance of the York County Recreation Tax District, to provide for the winding down and cessation of operations of the York County Recreation Tax District as an administrative division of the county, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to make a quick comment. And I, I want to go on record of saying, even though we're getting rid of this, uh, 1.5 rec tax on the unincorporated areas, we're still going to work to make sure we're doing things right, doing right by the 1.5. Hopefully it goes all the way through the countywide tax. I do recognize that there are needs outside of just the rec part of what these municipalities are doing. I want our staff to work with city managers, rec department directors, so that we get this right. I mean, we're here for everybody throughout the county, whether you live in the city, whether you live in the county. We're on the same team. We're on the same team. We want to be headed in the right direction. How we get there is the challenge. And I think all of us up here are committed to doing something that's right, that takes into account everybody's needs. And not everybody's needs is going to be met 100%, but we're not turning our backs on anybody. Not a municipality, not on our programs that we're, not our program, but not our parks that we're looking to get involved with. So I'm, I'm asking those city managers, those rec directors, let's give this a chance. Let's give this a chance. And I know, um, I'll be here through at least next budget cycle. And if it's not working, we can come back to the table. But let's don't bust, let's don't break the table before we able to get back to the table, if that's where we need to be. And that's, that's all I want to say on this, getting rid of this rec tax.
Well, I got my piece now. I just want to mention to, uh, everybody that may be listening, all 20 of you are, um, that the York County Library also off, offers a lot of programs that, uh, that are being duplicated by the cities and municipalities. Uh, so in the event that you can't do it at a, uh, municipality, then the, the county, the library may be able to help you out with it.
Good point.
Any other discussion?
I will not be supporting this motion tonight.
All is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Move to provide, uh, item number three, council to provide second reading of an ordinance to amend chapter 33, personnel in order to clarify sick leave and sick leave bank usage addressed in section 33.072, to provide for parental instead of maternity leave under the parameters established in section 33.073, to create new section 33.074 establishing and addressing bereavement leave, to incorporate parental leave into family and medical leave in section 33.078, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
We got you.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, so one thing I want to make sure y'all saw, we- So, so one thing I want to make sure y'all saw, we, we did provide answers to y'all's questions in the budget follow-up report. I know there were some questions about what we were actually asking for versus what we have now. I think it's important to realize that currently we don't truly have maternity leave. You can, you can utilize sick leave with the birth of a child or an adoption. We're trying to put that on paper, that we are actually going to offer that. Currently, we do not have bereavement leave. You could take sick leave if you have it for the death of a family member. We're asking for y'all to approve three days of bereavement leave. And then we're asking to open up the requirements of utilizing the sick leave bank. And if, if y'all want more information about how a sick leave bank works, we can share. But the goal is that employees are contributing their own sick leave into that bank. So, if a fellow employee runs out of sick leave and is in a bad situation, they have the opportunity to apply for more sick leave from that bank so they're not in a bad position where they can't care for a loved one. And so, we're trying to open up that, that usage of that potential sick leave bank so that people can care for their family members as well, not just themselves. Now, there's a process, there's a committee that reviews that and approves it. All three of these requests are, do not require funding. All they require is giving employees additional time off to care for their loved ones, their new kids, and, and take care of their families. And so, we think these are good options to add to our current benefit package and will be well received by our employees.
All the, any, any discussion or questions? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to, first item of New Business. Council to approve an award regarding bid number 2963 for the construction of York County Coroner's Facility to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, J&amp;B Services LLC of Danville, Alabama, for a total cost of $4,786,487.11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is, this is, do y'all want to say something about, this is actually a project that's gone out to bid that came in less than what was budgeted. And I know that it's something that's been a long time in the making and the, looks like the signals of, of the cost are, are, are turning to a better favor for us. So, that, this is good news for the taxpayers. All is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving now to item number two. Council to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code, Subchapter B zoning districts, to update the list of protected areas in the transportation corridor preservation overlay to reflect the latest pennies for progress referendum and to remove completed projects from overlay applicability, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All the-
One thing I will note is there will be a public hearing at the next one in second reading.
I only want to ask because did, was everybody that was affected by it notified?
The, the, the public hearing was noticed. This has gone through Planning Commission as well, so it's coming back to y'all, but there will be a public hearing. We've noticed that. Now, the roads have changed on each of these since the last pennies, so we haven't notified individual residents, but we have put out that there will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
Any other questions, comments? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Point of order, Madam Chair. There was one item pulled from consent.
Right, we hadn't gotten there yet.
Okay, thank you.
We are, got, have number three in consent that we now need to look at.
What about number three?
I'm sorry.
What about number three?
Did I not do three?
No, no.
They looked similar. All right, that's what I thought. See, you're calling me out, you're making me get all confused. We hadn't hit it there yet. Council to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code, Subchapter B zoning districts, to increase the maximum allowed building height for a data center use, provided that rear and side setbacks are increased, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would, I would like to make an amendment to this thing. My amendment would be to strike the data center use and have it apply to all uses within, all uses within the ID zoning.
All right, so the motion, did we get a motion in a second on the main motion? All right, so you want to make an amendment that amends the motion. Is there a second to that amendment?
Do we, can we have discussion?
Well, right now, since there's an amendment, we have to get a second before we can even discuss it.
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second to amend it.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Okay, so this was sent to the Planning Commission. And I mean, we, in my notes on what happened to the Planning and Zoning Committee, we, we addressed this also. And then we said, let's let the Planning Commission talk about this. And their, their ordinance or proposed ordinance amendment was for data centers only. And if you look at that down in the executive summary, it says data centers only. And there's a reason for that. And I say, we're going to go into an area we do not want to touch if we make this countywide. And I do not support an amendment to this. We want it to be data centers only.
Is the motion for countywide or just to a specific zoning?
It's for all ID industrial zoning.
Okay.
You want me to explain my reasoning?
Yeah.
All right. So, the reason I, I wanted to amend this is I'm not a big fan of carving out special ordinances for specific people, specific uses, anything like that. If it's good enough for a data center, it's good enough for, you know, any use in that zoning class. And I don't think that one big building that has somebody in it is any different from another big tall building. So, all we're doing is by trying to make a motion to isolate this to a single purpose is cluttering up our already too complex zoning code. And I really want this to be switched over to, to include all uses. Where there are exceptions to the height amendment so that, you know, you have to have additional setbacks and whatnot. And also, you know, again, this only applies to industrial. So, I think it still keeps it pretty isolated. And if you're in an industrial zoning anyway, you already have a lot of other stuff going on. I think the, this minor increase in the height is insignificant compared to the structure itself.
So, I won't be supporting it tonight, but let me tell you why. So, I think that originally the, the part of this that we, we are stepping out on again is for data centers. I think that we need to understand the, the value of what it brings to data centers, but I think it also is an ability to study the impact of a higher building from within York County and see what kind of feedback we end up getting from the neighboring, the neighbors, et cetera. I think maybe down the road, there's an opportunity to raise, but again, at this point, I think this is a, our first step at a study. And then we could take the feedback and if we decide down the road we want to do something, we'll come back, so.
I wish we were talking about raising the maximum height across all applicable zonings because one of the things that come to mind is hotels. We've, we've heard for years that we're not going to get hotels to come into some of our unincorporated areas because of height restrictions. We're not going to get the bigger chains because they won't.
Yeah, let me, let me just say that I think that that issue as well as the one that Mr. Litten is proposing are currently, are currently, have been referred to the committee for debate and discussion. The item that's on the agenda tonight was something that we dispensed with council committee on because there was unanimous support for this specific use. So, I mean, in, in actuality, those two items, and, and I just wanted to go ahead and make sure to make that known at the outset because those two issues are, are currently have been referred to committee. So, I won't be supporting the amendment for that reason, but I do support the, the main motion on-
All right, well, I'll, I'll rescind my second considering that there's something else coming down the pipe that's going to address more so on a unilateral level versus right now. So, I withdraw my second.
All right, is there any other second? Keeps that alive? Oh. If there, if there is not a second, then the amendment fails. All right, so we're back to the main motion, which is to increase the height for the data centers. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Now, we go to item number three in consent. Rezoning action, consider second reading case number 25-09, tax map number 648000091022263033841 to rezone from RUD to RMX 614.06 acres in District 1.
Motion to approve with the deed restrictions as labeled here. I just want to make sure that what is on the agenda is the same as what you had stated. Again, I, I want to make sure we get that covered correctly.
So, we don't, we don't hear from folks at this point in time, but you can ask management and Jonathan if that covers.
So, the deed restriction right now that limits the use of the property to age-restricted single-family homes shall be recorded with York County Registry of Deeds within 90 days of the zoning approval. Is that where we're settling on or is there an amendment to that?
I believe the applicant, when they spoke earlier this evening, was requesting an amendment to that specific condition. I believe they were preferring that the deed restrictions be recorded per lot.
Okay. Deed restriction recorded per lot with a 90-day?
At this point, this is second reading, so rather than try to negotiate this condition live through intermediary conversations, perhaps the applicant can reach out to staff and to the county attorney's office on what their preferred motion would be and they could bring that back for council's consideration at third reading.
Okay, so I'm going to approve it with this original deed restricted on here and then we can address that in the third reading. Okay, motion to approve with existing deed restriction that limits the use of the property to age-restricted, single-family homes shall be recorded with York County Registry of Deeds within 90 days of the zoning approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Committee and other reports. Chairwoman Debbie Cloninger for Planning and Zoning Committee.
Yes, so we met May 6th. And during that, that meeting, we did have an update on the rural zoning project that I think will come, be coming forward to council for a vote. It was a very comprehensive and time-consuming project for plant, the planning department. And I think that they truly did a masterful job. They tried very, very hard to listen to what everybody said and meet all the concerns. So, I hope that you feel the same way when you see it. Okay, then we also had a discussion regarding maximum building heights in two different areas. One is data centers and one was one sort of a countywide commercial situation that would bring in hotels. There was much discussion on the hotel, not so much on the data. So, we decided to let the Planning Commission lead, lead the way. So, that's what we did.
Okay, is there staff reports coming out of committee? Is that, was that in the?
So, so staff have developed staff reports and they should be attached to, to the agenda, but we can email those if they're not for some reason.
Okay, I just didn't see it, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cloninger. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. We have, do we have any council member, new knowledge, any comments before we go into executive session?
Yep.
Mr. Atkins?
Yep, we got the 39th Annual Memorial Day Ceremony, Sunday, May 25th at the Veterans Park at 3:45 PM in York. So, everybody that can try to come by and attend.
Okay, I have one.
Ms. Cloninger.
So, obviously tonight, we had the community here that gave us a lot of information concerning SILFAB. And so, I would like to request, and Karen will be giving us, I think, that packet when we go into executive session, and that I request that we put that on the agenda for June 16th agenda to give us time to review that material for discussion.
Any other council member, new knowledge, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Deb just said. I, I support the same request also. I think tonight, again, more information came out tonight. We start talking about families here that, again, we're referring to schools next to a business where they're basically, they're sharing the same fence line. Okay, we've got, as I talked about, 28,530 gallons toxic liquid, you know, we've got 4,000, 47,603 gallons of corrosive liquid, again, all labeled out upfront so we could see it. So, again, this is, this is a big issue. And again, we want to make sure that we're continuing to talk through this and I highly support our next discussion as we can look to do and support the people of our community.
Anyone else?
I just want to piggyback off what Councilman Atkins mentioned about Memorial Day coming up. A lot of people made a lot of sacrifices for us to be here, to live and enjoy a lot of things that some places, climbing walls, climbing fences, swimming oceans to get here to enjoy. So, if you know a family who's had, had someone who, who made those sacrifices or who currently serving and all those good, good things, but definitely if you can make it out on Sunday, I know every council member who's sat in that seat, this has been a big deal, big priority for them when they have the service over at, at the memorial. Come out, this is for those sitting here, those who's watching at home, those who care to cover this council meeting through, through the media. It is a big deal because some people made some ultimate sacrifices and continue to do so to this day. So, I want to make sure we pay homage and respect to those who, who've done so. That's it.
All right, do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. We have several here. Receipt of legal advice litigation update. Receive of legal advice, request to authorize condemnation regarding project number 17228-011, Flint Hill Street Drainage Improvement, tract number 32, 38, 41, 93, 103, and 164. Contractual matter, recreation tax IGAs. Receipt of legal advice, SILFAB Solar Matters.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session. We are out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have two. Motion to authorize the county manager and the county, and the county council chairwoman to issue a press release regarding SILFAB as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
Motion to authorize condemnation regarding project number 17228-011, Flint Hill Street Drainage Improvement, tract number 32, 38, 41, 93, 103, and 164 as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion and a second, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to, join.
Second.
Motion and a second, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.